the December 15th, 2015 Vista Planning Commission Meeting. And Commissioner Fleming, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible)
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Fleming.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
Commissioner Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Student Commissioner Rutabush.
Yes.
And Student Commissioner Acevedo.
Thank you. Commissioners, in front of you are the minutes from the November 17th, 2015. Are there any changes? If not, can I hear a motion? Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you. I have a minor correction. It's under lighting. The first comment that says by Commissioner Carroll agreed that pedestrian lighting must be adequate for security and so on. I think that was Commissioner Rosler that made that comment. Then my comments were underneath that. Does that sound right, Commissioner Rosler?
It does.
Okay, that's all. And with that change, I'll recommend approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, may we vote? Let the record show that the minutes from the November 17th meeting as amended this evening pass unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Conley, are there any agenda changes for this evening?
No changes, Chairman.
Thank you. All right. I've got some speaker slips in front of me here, but it appears that all of the speaker slips are for items that we're going to discuss tonight. If anyone is here to speak on anything other than what's on this evening's agenda, now would be the time, and we just need to fill out a speaker slip. I don't see anybody moving to the back, so we'll go ahead and go forward with tonight's presentation. What we're doing this evening is some early design reviews. We started doing this practice, I think, in the late summer, early fall, and it's an opportunity for the public as well as the planning commission and the developers to take a look on, as an unofficial, they're not here to, we're not going to make any decision about the project. It's just to say, we like this, we question this, how are you going to handle this? It's mostly enlightenment for all of our opinions. So that's what we're going to do this evening again. So because we have so many speaker slips, we will be using the timer, so you'll be getting three minutes. You will see on the podium, there's a little box on the corner there, and it'll go green, and that starts your clock at three minutes, and then you'll see it go to yellow, and then it will turn red when your three minutes are up. So with that said, Mr. Conley, will you start us off, please, on Design Review One, Breeze Hill Apartments, PC 14-313?
Thank you. Chairman and Commission, this is the second design review for this project. It was before you on September 1st for the first design review. This is a request for a site development plan for 91 apartment units. The site is 3.2 acres, located at 631 South Melrose Drive. This is generally southwest of the intersection of South Melrose and Breeze Hill. There's currently a 21,000-square-foot commercial retail building on the site, and the project would replace that building with the apartment units and the associated amenities. As I mentioned, it was before you on September 1st, 2015, and the minutes from that meeting were included in your packet. They revised their submittal based on comments that were heard at that meeting and submitted back at the end of November, and so we're before you this evening to review their second submittal and make sure that they are responding accordingly. The project site is shown on the overhead here. It's in the back of the commercial site where the CVS and Comerica Bank is. There are several retail suites within the existing building and the parking area in front of it. It's all the area shown in red. 3.2-acre site does not include the drugstore, the bank in the fronts, just the rear portion of the property. Front's Breeze Hill Road. There are two driveways on Breeze Hill that provide access to the site, and a driveway out onto South Melrose that's a right-in, right-out-only. Breeze Hill Park is to the south. The Charlemont condominiums are to the west. Avalon Apartments are to the north, and the retail center is to the east. Some photos here of the site that were taken yesterday, generally along Breeze Hill Road and the parking lot looking into the site. On the left is the view to the west from the westerly driveway looking down Breeze Hill Road. The site's on the left, and the Avalon Apartments there are on the right. The center picture is in the parking lot looking toward the commercial center through the parking lot, and the picture on the right is at the westerly driveway looking east down Breeze Hill Road. The site is on the right, and the Avalon Apartments are on the left. The general plan designation on the property is mixed-use. This allows commercial or residential uses or both on the site with a maximum density of 40 units to the acre. The zoning is mixed-use 40, which allows up to four stories with a maximum density of 40 dwelling units per acre consistent with the general plan designation. The site plan is shown here on the right, the revised site plan. The original plan that we reviewed on September 1st is shown on the left. There are some subtle changes that I'll go over. There are still seven three-story apartment buildings proposed on the site. Those are shown in the red here. They're generally arranged in the same configuration as before with some subtle differences, which I'll point out. There's still a community building generally located in the same location, which is shown in the blue, and four parking garages wrapping around the western and southern boundary of the sites, which are shown in the green. The general changes to the site plan are that the buildings on the top of the drawing here that are adjacent to Breeze Hill Road were slightly pushed back. This was in response to a number of concerns that were expressed on September 1st about the buildings being too close to the street, not having adequate setback, not providing for porches and adequate pedestrian access from the street, and so those buildings were pushed back, and some units were lost in the buildings in the rear of the property as a result of that shift. There's also some changes in the parking. The areas in the yellow show some rearrangement of parking. In the lower portion of the project, there's some tandem parking provided. These would be spaces assigned to individual units so that they would have the two tandem spaces in one unit. This was in response to the request for additional parking, and some amenity space was lost in order to accommodate that. There were also some concerns expressed about the parking, the perpendicular parking that was located near the driveway, which is up in the upper right-hand corner shown in yellow. Those spaces were changed to parallel spaces adjacent to the driveway, and so there's not as many spaces there, but they've pushed some additional spaces into the site. They've also relocated the proposed access into the park to the south, which would be on the east side of the project in between the CVS and the apartment development so that more public access could be provided, and you wouldn't have to go into the project site to get through to the park. There are a couple of other changes, and I'm going to let the applicant's architect go over. Those are the major site plan differences. I mentioned that the units in the front were pushed back, and the buildings in the back of the site, which I'll show here on the overhead, the three buildings in the back were slightly crunched down to accommodate that shift, and so the loss of 10 units occurred in those three buildings, so they were pushed together and lost some units. The unit count in the overall project was reduced from 100 to 91. The density consequently reduces from 32 dwelling units to acre, to the acre to 29 dwelling units to the acre. The required parking, as a result of the unit reduction, goes down from 168 to 156 spaces. The parking provided is 165 spaces, so they still exceed the required amount by nine spaces. Overall, the parking was reduced by one space, but because the overall unit count was reduced, they're still, they still meet the parking requirements and slightly exceed the standards by nine spaces. The building height was revised. It was 34 to 36 feet with the old design, which had kind of a butterfly roof style, if you remember. That height changed from 34 to 40 feet. The increase in height is due to the roof changes that were made to the building to accommodate some different roof elevations, and that increased the height of the overall buildings. The community room was slightly reduced in size as a result of the shifting around on the site, and the minimum unit size for the studio was slightly increased by 20 feet. This is just a result of some of the shifting that occurred as a result of the project The architectural elevations are shown here. The original application is on the left. The revised application is on the right. The architect and applicant are here. They're going to go through the changes to the architecture. They refer to the revised elevation as a Santa Barbara architectural style, stucco facade, some wood trellises, punchouts in the balcony elevations, as well as some wood trim to provide some relief to the building. These architectural elevations are all included in your packet. This shows all four sides of the building. You'll note that the roof elevation in the upper right-hand corner of this drawing shows a different roof elevation than what was shown before. This is a pitched roof, which changes the height of the building, as I mentioned. Under the planning commission's review tonight, I want to point a couple things out, just so that there's clarity. There is no general plan or zoning changes requested as part of this application, so the planning commission's discretion is fairly limited to the site plan and architectural issues that are in our development code and our design guideline manual. The MU zone that the project's located in allows up to 40 dwelling units per acre. So I know there's some concerns about the density of the project, but they are allowed up to 40 units per acre per our zoning code. The parking requirements are listed here. It requires 1.25 spaces for a studio, one and a half space for a one-bedroom, and two spaces for a two-bedroom. Overall, the project requirement for parking is 156 spaces. They provided the parking that's required by our code, so again, I know there were parking concerns identified the last time. The applicant has responded and provided some additional parking, but by meeting those zoning standards for parking, the staff can't require them to provide additional parking. The building height is four stories or 60 feet within the zone. They're under the 40 feet and four-story requirement, and so they are within the height limit that is allowed by the zoning. The discretion that the commission has tonight is generally related to the site plan and architecture, as I mentioned, and compliance with the policies in the city's design guidelines. There were a couple of speakers the last time, as well as commissioners, that identified some of the design guideline requirements. I listed them in this slide. There's a lot of them. I'm not going to go through them all, but in general, it's related to the scale of the building, the layout of the site, the efficiency of the project, the adequate, whether the buildings are adequately broken up to provide light and air, the architectural elevations, if there's a defined base, midsection, and roofline, if all four sides of the building are sufficiently detailed and articulated. The rooflines are varied and articulated, windows on all four sides of the building. So you kind of get the idea that this is supposed to be an evaluation of the architecture and the efficiency of the site plan. I understand that there are a lot of concerns from the neighbors and the public about the density and the parking and the building height, but I want to make sure the commission understands that we don't have a lot of discretion in those areas. It's more related to, is the building attractive and does it meet the requirements of our design guidelines? So the applicant's going to provide their presentation with a summary of the comments that were heard and the changes that were made. Again, this is a second design review to provide the commission an opportunity to give the applicant direction with respect to the revisions, and that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Are there any questions of staff regarding what we've seen so far? Commissioner Rosler.
Thank you, Chairman Kramer. John, two questions. We heard last time in the letters that were provided in the packet, a lot of concern about ownership of the units, requests for the project to be made condominiums so that there is onsite owners of the site. That's not one of the things that we have discretion over tonight, is it? Whether they market them as condominiums, they have not provided us with a tentative map, so that's their choice, and we don't have discretion over it? Am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the second question on the tandem parking. Haven't seen that here since I've been on the commission, allowed by the ordinance, and have we done it before?
No. This is not something that is standard in our ordinance. It is, the parking allowance for tandem parking is completely at the discretion of the commission, so the applicant can certainly speak to why they're proposing it, but the commission is allowed to vary the parking standards or allow for different parking requirements based on the proposals that are presented and the evidence supporting them, so you can decide whether or not you want to accept that proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll.
Mr. Conley, on the north side, on Jason de Breeze Hill, where the buildings have been pushed back, I think they had previously shown some grading in the right-of-way. That's been eliminated, I think, from what I can tell from this grading plan. That's been eliminated.
That's correct.
And it's, there is a note regarding a proposed wall. Is that, is there still a small wall there along the right-of-way, or is that, I don't see much of a great difference there, but...
I don't believe there's a wall there, but we can refer to their civil engineers here this evening as well.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, one of the points that came up in the previous meeting was, rather than have this just be an apartment complex, whether it could become a mixed-use complex. Has that been broached at all with the applicant?
I know the applicant heard those comments at the September 1st meeting, but they have not included a commercial component in their revised proposal. The zoning doesn't require them to have a commercial component. It's at their discretion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Conley, I have one question regarding the parking. So, pardon me. They are currently required to have, for the 91 units to have 156 spaces. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if every, all of the 91 apartments did not have any ADA-required resident, the 156 is correct, so by providing 165, some number of those are ADA parking spaces?
That's correct. That's required by our code.
Okay, okay. So there are, there is ample parking by our code?
Correct. 165 spaces includes all the ADA-required spaces as well.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll go to the applicant, please. Gordon Carrier, please.
I'm not Gordon Carrier. I'm Ian Gill. And I'm representing Silvergate and Pathfinder on this, on this presentation. Gordon Carrier will do a little bit of presentation towards the end of our coordinated presentation here.
Okay.
So first of all, I want to thank you all for the comments that you gave us the last time, and we listened very carefully to the comments that we heard from you and from the public here. There are some things that we feel we can't do. We, we've owned this complex for a couple of years now. One of the reasons we considered building apartments on the back of the property was because the retail had failed there. We don't have any indication that it would be now any more successful than it was then, and so we've chosen not to include retail in the project. We don't want to have unsuccessful retail. As experienced developers, we know that in places like downtown San Diego, where there was a requirement for retail, there are, you only have to drive around downtown San Diego and see how much vacant retail there is in those mixed-use projects where they have a lot more density, a lot more feet on the ground, and people actually living in units, and if it doesn't work there, we feel pretty confident that this isn't something we should attempt to pioneer in this location here. We're also not in the business of doing housing for sale. We believe very strongly, and one of the reasons we restarted this development company six years ago, is that there are great people who don't have the opportunity to have a down payment, buy a home of their own. They could be in the service. They could be in the police department, the fire department, in nursing. They could be schoolteachers. They have a right to live in nice accommodation and good, high-quality... They have a right to live in nice accommodation, and good, high-quality rental accommodation is the most affordable kind of product they can live in. We feel, and we've built police headquarters, we've built civic centers, as you know, you know, we feel this is an important contribution to society. We need to accommodate much more growth within San Diego County in the future, and really, the only way it's going to happen is through densification. It needs to be done very responsibly, and we believe that our project is a good example of that. In listening to the comments that you made, we didn't just make minor cosmetic adjustments. It's taken us several months of very hard work to come back and actually make the changes that we're going to share with you. I won't run through the team, we have representatives here, you've seen the site. As you heard, the existing retail building on the back parcel was just over 21,000 square feet. You know, there never was more than 12,000 square feet of it ever occupied, at this point, there's only 1,300 square feet. Contrary to what some people indicated, we didn't drive any of these retail tenants out, via Cecilia left owing significant rent. So our goal is to do a high-quality project on that parcel. You're aware of what's been built across the street, I want to emphasize to you, and it maybe wasn't apparent to you before, but what we're building here, what we're proposing to build is very, very different in character, has a totally different feel, and is very different in density. And if you look at the site plan, although it doesn't indicate a completed Avalon project across the street, you'll see the difference in scale between our buildings and what's been built across the street. And that's, that's a difference in scale and size, because our upper-floor units run right through the building. Again, we have patio access to all the units. Some of the comments that we listened to the last time were about the architecture, we've attempted to address that. We didn't want to undermine the aesthetic and the quality of the floor plans of the units that we've done, because they've been very successful and extremely well-received in other locations. But we did want to respond to the things that we heard from you and from the public. We didn't just move the buildings back a little bit, I'm going to indicate to you exactly what we did. We did have a retaining wall in the right-of-way before, we've removed that. We have basically freestanding garages or carports for 100% of the units. As you heard, we had 100 units in the last proposal, we actually started off with 110. After working with staff before the submittal, we reduced that to 100. And we heard your concern about the head-in parking spaces. We originally had nine in the main entry, and that's not a situation that's different from most shopping centers around the country. But we heard what you said about it being safer to do parallel spaces, so we did respond to that. Our buildings are now 20 feet from the Breeze Hill right-of-way, and actually 30 feet from the curb on that front building. As you heard, that meant that we had to make other adjustments within the complex, but I think overall, this was a very good adjustment to make, and we appreciate your input on that. I think the project is improved for it. We've eliminated all the retaining walls in the right-of-way. We've actually paralleled those nine head-in spaces, which meant that we eliminated five spaces, and we're left with only four parallel spaces in that location. That's part of the reason we wanted to add additional parking in another location. As you've heard, we did make adjustments to the buildings themselves, we relocated the pedestrian pathway for the community to the edge of the project where it's very comfortable for people to go right through and not have to go through our project to get actually to the, to the Breeze Hill Park. As you heard, we added tandem spaces. We have tandem spaces in our other projects. It's a management issue, these spaces are allocated to tenants, so we only allocate them to two-bedroom units. That works very well, it's worked very effectively in other projects. We heard the comments about the view of the garages on the back from the park, we, part of the reason we've got pitched tiled roofs on those garages now, and that we've added additional screening landscape on the back, is to address those concerns that were expressed. This, this gives you an idea of the sections from Breeze Hill Road as they were before. There was nearly a six-foot differential between the street and the building itself. And as I mentioned, really, the building was only set back 10 feet from the right-of-way. Obviously, that changes, if you look at the sections, section one is the most extreme, that's furthest west on Breeze Hill Road, section three is the one that's closest to the main access point, where you can see it's much less extreme and there isn't a retaining wall. We're now in the most extreme location in section three, we're only three feet above the street to the building. We have private patios for all the units on that building, where we only had a few before, we heard the comments on that, we have attempted to address it. And so, just running quickly through all the concerns that we listed, the ones that we felt we could address, the building was too close to the road, you heard what we did, basically, we would have had to have a variance and a permit, we heard that would not be an acceptable thing to do. So we moved the buildings back, as I said, they're now 30 feet from the curb, the way that, that we're dealing with it with a natural grade now, there will be no requirement for any kind of a variance or a permit. All the ground floor units on that building have patios. You heard what I said about the head-in parking spaces, we listened to you, we've made those parallel, we've eliminated five spaces as a result. You said the architecture, we heard the architecture doesn't fit the community. We like the architecture, but we've listened, and Gordon Carrier's going to describe to you how we've changed the architecture and the key elements of that. There was concern about project density, we've eliminated another nine units, we're down to 91 units. We met the city parking standard before, and we have one garage or carport space per unit with storage incorporated. We redesigned the project, we now have nine spaces more than the city requirement, and I'll share with you how those are broken down. There was a concern about direct tenant access, from a security perspective. We have a slightly different perspective, that is, that we like our tenants to be able to meet and greet and see each other on the project, but we listened to the concern, there were no direct tenant pedestrian access from the garage to the units in the plan as it was before. We've made fairly significant changes, we can now, we now have direct access to 15 out of the 21 ground-floor units, to meet that concern that was expressed. Again, we've made the changes to the garages, again, to make them more attractive-looking and to screen them more from the park. We moved the pedestrian access, as I mentioned. We've actually even made some adjustments to the landscape and irrigation, you know, the project will now comply with the standards that won't even be adopted until the middle of 2016. And previously, we had about three times the city requirement for open space, even with the added parking, we still have two times more than the open space required. So as you heard, the property is actually zoned for up to 127 units, we only have 91, that's nearly a 30% reduction in the allowed density from zoning. With the changes that we've made to the building on the front, we've actually lowered that building somewhat relative to the street. Our buildings are lower than Avalon's in the first place, the only addition in height's been created, because we've added the tiled roofs that everybody felt would be an appropriate vernacular to fit better with the community. We took elements of Irving Gill, no relation, and Santa Barbara-style architecture, which we admire, and Gordon and his team did a great job of making, making those changes. I won't go through the difference between our units, which really feel much more like homes, and some of the other double corridor-loaded access apartments that are much more typical. We still have a large landscape central open space, we have a nice rec room and leasing office. This is the breakdown of the parking. There's one space per bedroom for all the units. The studios have a single space, the two-bedroom units have two spaces, one-bedroom units have one space, for a total of basically 156. And, you know, we, that would be the requirement, we actually have 165, so we have, we have nine more. We're planning on using photovoltaic panels to do basically all the common area landscape security lighting in the project. We'll have bike racks, we're going to do other things that we can to promote, you know, as good a community integration as we possibly can. So with that, I'll hand it over to Gordon, just to tell you a little bit more about the changes that have been made in the architecture.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Carrier, Architects Carrier Johnson Plus Culture, and we're delighted to be here. You know, as architects, we are engaged with projects, we design them, we present them, and people react in different ways to the aesthetic it might create or not create. We came here before you, presented the project that you see before you probably right now. That aesthetic, I think, had a lot of relationships to things that we were trying to do, we thought would be manifest in a, in a great output, that I think we heard were not satisfactory to you, and I will stand before you and say, that's okay with us. We learned from this, and what we do is react to it in a way that we think is positive. So what I wanted to do is just take you briefly through just a very few slides to show you some of the differences, this, of course, being the original idea, and the more close-up version of those same townhouse-style units. You'll see in these units, for the most part, there's a, there's a singular mass, and then attachments to it that are, that are largely transparent, let's call them, rails that you can see all the way through, et cetera. The difference is, when you, when you go to a Mediterranean, or you go to an Irving Gill-esque, or a Santa Barbara-type architecture, is that massing becomes more important, so opacities with punched openings in them become more important. And so you'll see in this project that really three things have been done that differentiate it from where it was. Tile roofs have been used, color has been used, and massing breakdown has been used additionally in the units themselves to create variance in scale, to create interest in the elevation relative to its color, and certainly to create texture, whether it be the, the fluted tiles, or whether it be the wrought iron railings that are used in the project, and that's, that's really what this is intended to convey. You'll see the project varies by different unit type, for example, the, the corners of the buildings in some cases have been raised to emphasize a cornice line at the skyline, a very typical notion of cornice articulation, and that same corner is articulated, let's say, with a balcony output, that has an opaque feeling about it, but obviously it's open with arched, arched toppings and wrought iron railings to give some differentiation to things like corners, or entries, or balconies, or things of that sort in this area. You also see in the lower left of this, this shot, the, the covered garages, the garage elements that got a gabled roof and tile associated with it, which was a very specific item brought out in our conversation before. Even the common buildings, as shown in the lower right, took up this idea of wood trellising, it's all about trying to create this notion of scale, human scale, things that people that are five foot to six foot tall can feel good about, because there's something above their head that makes the space feel comfortable and scaled down for, for their presence. This is the original view of what it was like to look into the entry to the leasing office, this is the revised version of that same view. You'll see even color utilized in the, in the, in the idea of doorway surround, these kinds of things are very typical colorations used in this style. And so relief is also found in the balcony units, I might have a slightly brighter, relief is also found in the balcony units where there is an opaque corner, a cutaway, which is sort of reminiscent of the idea of a blank wall with a punched opening in it, that's very Santa Barbara style, and in that opening is where wrought iron railing occurs, and then even the surrounds of the openings are trimmed in a way that gives contrast to the elevation and, and we hope, more scale and appreciation for, for the project. This common space is, is a, is a very elegant part of the project, that has still been maintained in a way that we think is going to be very beneficial to its, to its tenants, you can see the building surrounding it still portraying the styles and breakdowns, whether it be a wood corner, or these masked balconies that used to be open rail, as you saw before, whether it be the tile roof with a slightly elevated tower. Mr. Gill talked about the slightly higher elevation, that is, so that we can get the tops of those, those gabled roofs to work in the, in the height restrictions, and then you can see the breakdown of the space here as well. I'm going to turn it over to Nikki Van Buren to talk more about the landscape aspect of the project, and I'm happy to answer questions later. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Vicki.
Thanks, Nikki, with Land Lab Landscape Architecture, and I think they already got the best slide to talk about here, but just, the major change to the landscape site plan was to remove the turf. I feel that's important, and I think we can still accomplish the same thing with even more drought-tolerant natural treatment, creating some social spaces within the space. For now, the pool remains, but that's not the, the most water-consumptive part, the rest of the landscape would be primarily California-native drought-tolerant succulents, and luckily, I'm from Santa Barbara, so I know exactly how to do this. And this was the previous design, which had the lawn in the middle, we just wanted to use that for, you know, kids to play on or whatever, but I think it's a, even a good move to pull that out. These are, you can see from the carport, we do some screening to reduce the view of the parking areas, and really keep the focus on the fantastic central space. The, you can see there's quite a bit of landscape buffer now, and not with, not only with the shifting the buildings down from Breeze Hill Road, but we still have quite a bit of buffer around the perimeter of the project. We'd be retaining the trees, there's mature tristania trees that are between the park and the project, so those would stay, and we would supplement those with some hedges and additional plant material. And there's a wall along the south, I'm sorry, on the west side that separates the house on that side, we keep all that landscape screening, and then again, add additional And this is just a little bit more about the plant palette, just keeping it as low water use as possible, with some popstah color and creating kind of enough of a buffer. And in the front corner, we still have the bioswale area, which would be at the entry, kind of the entry corner, and that would be kind of a grassier, natural kind of open space feel, more welcoming, so. And it'll still, like Ian said, it'll meet all the latest water requirements as far as the most up-to-date irrigation techniques and, and working with the plant material, I guess. Ian, did you want to talk again? Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, thank you very much for your attention. I would just say that, you know, I've heard the statistic that, you know, 70% of the demand and the need for additional housing in San Diego is going to be driven by our children and our grandchildren here, and our aging population getting out of for-sale housing. If that's the case, projects like this are really desperately needed, and we hope that you'll be supportive of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see if we have any questions, Mr. Gill, from the commissioners, before we open it up to the public. Are there any questions of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Looney, please.
Just a question for the landscaping, in that corner where we have the bioswale, is there any problems or potential issues with the deck covering that bioswale?
Can you come to this, so we can get it on the tape, please?
Brad Sager, our civil engineer.
Thank you, Brad.
So from a functionality, from the water quality perspective of the basin, covering it with a deck is not going to affect that at all, but from a landscaping perspective...
I guess the idea is, it would be vegetated, but as you go towards back underneath the deck, as the grate comes up, that would just go to probably something like rock, like a chunkier rock, so it would appear to be entirely vegetated when you're looking at it, but underneath the deck, yeah, it wouldn't be planting anymore, because they wouldn't get the light.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jackal, please. Okay. All right. Now we will, it looks like we're going to get some questions or comments from the, the community. Taylor Horry? And, I'll wait till you get here. So it's my understand, Taylor, that you have a presentation you're going to give, and that Robin Gilden and John Manders have given their time to you, is that correct?
Yes, if that's okay with the commission.
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Yay. Happy holidays, Planning Commission, we are back for our third round this evening. As you noted at, oh, wait. I probably should have done that. There we go. I may be young, but technology. As you noted at the last meeting, this is not a fluke, these are images from the last three meetings, the first being the community meeting that we all attended. Thank you again for your time and consideration, as we continue our talk... Thank you again for your time and consideration as we continue our talks regarding the proposed Breeze Hill apartment project. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of many in our neighborhood with the goal of maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in Vista through the guidelines in the general plan and Vista Vision 2030. And I just want to reach out and say thank you for your questions earlier, and I do apologize, some points may be obsolete now after hearing Mr. Conley's statements to open, but I'm just going to proceed as I had planned, so. After the last planning commission meeting we left hopeful, we felt like you heard us. We were eager for Mr. Gill to reach out to us, as you had advised, and were truly disappointed when Mr. Conley sent out the notice on tonight's meeting. In the heart of the holiday season, with many in our neighborhood cannot be here. In 115 days since the last planning commission meeting, we were never contacted by Mr. Gill to address our concerns or to discuss the possibility of true mixed use. Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have discussed how we could come up with a plan that we can all live with. This is our neighborhood, and we will be here for a very long time after Mr. Gill builds this apartment complex and moves on to his next project. We would have talked about the setbacks, site orientation, and height of the buildings so we are not completely cut off from our park, one of the last pieces of visual open space. As you can see from this slide, this is a map of the parks in Vista. The star is our park. And so you can see how far away we are. You know, the idea is that you want a livable, walkable Vista. Well, this is the only park I can walk to. So I'm being, I know there's a gate that's going in, but, you know, what's the quality of living when I have to look at a big building before I can get to the gate? Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have asked, why doesn't mixed use make sense? The existing homes and condominiums, not to mention the hundreds of new residents in the Avalon Apartments, would gladly support services we can use that keep us out of our cars and off the roads, which is the goal of the Vista Vision 2030. As one woman stated last meeting, we want some places where we can have a coffee and connect in the community and have some crap to buy. This picture is from my birthday at Via Cecilia, the Italian restaurant that we so nicely, Mr. Gill pointed out, left with rent. So you can see, it's a community gathering place for residents. It's a full restaurant, you know, it's a party. It was a fun place. It's where we celebrated multiple events in my family, and they're gone. Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have welcomed a collaboration, as was the case with Wilmington Homes. They are proposing, Wilmington Homes is they, to build only 50 condos on a similar plot of land compared to the Silvergate Development, who are looking to build 91 apartments, nearly double the density without the community benefits of homeownership or residential parking requirements. It's not that it can't be done. Wilmington Homes is doing it. They have 50 market-rate condominiums on less acres than Silvergate. They had two community meetings with South Vista communities that were not asked of them to do, and they revised a plan that reflected their input. Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have discussed the density, which, even with a 10% reduction, is 28-plus units per acre compared to Wilmington's project at 15 units per acre, which is far more in line with the surrounding residential communities. It was also noted by staff at one meeting that in hindsight, Avalon probably should have been closer to the density of the Charlemont condominiums. We would have also looked at what really makes sense as far as architecture, given the apartments across the street don't fit with the surroundings and should not be emulated to create more of what does not fit. Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have questioned the changing market for housing since this project was proposed. Avalon is now offering up to six weeks of free rent, as you can see here. These are dated. That first one on the left is a sponsored ad, so that shows up as you, you know, show interest in the community. But the other two, October 8th and November 9th, are showing a reduced rent. In my experience, this is a standard practice with apartment complexes who are underoccupied. Had Silvergate reached out to the community, we would have brought up our continued concerns with parking. Do I just play the, we have a short video. That just, it goes through our parking, or our community in the morning, you know, not at 9:30 on a Wednesday when everybody's gone to work, but at 6:45 on a Saturday morning, this is what it looks like. This is coming out of Avalon's on the right. So I'm just going to keep talking while this runs. There's a nice subheader on the bottom, whatever you call it. Anyways, so, we would have talked about our concerns with parking. I learned at the parking community meeting held last month about shared-use parking with mixed use. During the day, while residents are away, parking is available for the commercial businesses. In the evening, the parking is then used for the residents. One would hope we could avoid these situations that you see here now, where we have wall-to-wall parking along Breeze Hill and La Tortuga. There is obviously concerns within the city about parking, hence why they are looking at parking standards. We understand Mr. Gill and Silvergate have a right to develop their property, but there is an existing neighborhood and community that he is, at this stage, invading. Is this to be the precedent we set for community engagement for the apartment project Silvergate Development is proposing to build in our village, the heart of our community? 25 years from now, I will be 49. You can do the math on how old that makes me now. My worst fear is that, two and a half decades from now, there will be bars on my windows and I will not feel safe walking my children through my neighborhood. We've seen how apartments change over the years. Belatera Apartments, which are on the left in the video right now on Hacienda, were originally luxury apartments. They are not today. We know from watching the constant stream of moving trucks, renters do not set down roots. I speak from experience. In the last five years, I lived in three different apartment complexes. I only talked to one neighbor today, and that's only thanks to Facebook. If considering liking and occasional comments setting down roots and building community, then by all means, build more apartments. And I just want to say really quick, thus far, we've pretty much stuck to facts, and I've tried not to make this a moral argument, just because, you know, facts are fair for everyone, but Mr. Gill brought up building responsibly. And after all of the photos that we have here and the video about parking, can you honestly tell me that building 91 more apartments in my neighborhood is the responsible thing to do? How is that? I understand there's a demand, but how is it responsible to build it right there? Vista Vision 2030 will remain a vision unless it is carried out by the people who are its stewards, one thoughtful decision at a time. We trust you to help make that vision a reality, one we can all be proud of as Vista residents. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Nikki Van Buren, please. Okay. Brian Gilden. Brian, please state your name and your address, please, and we'll start the clock.
Good evening. Brian Gilden, 1179 La Tortuga. I've lived there for 15 years. I brought up the idea of transparency last time I was up here, and I just have this uneasy feeling that I just, I don't feel like that we're having the same sort of transparency just from the, again, we were expecting to meet with the developer, meet with the city to talk about these things. I know that by signing up and speaking and having our email address, that we're supposed to be contacted by the city, I can tell you that I was not contacted by the city for this meeting, and the only way that we knew about this meeting was the neighborhood folks that posted it out over here, and I'm concerned about that. I'm also not sure that even with all these changes, certainly, certainly they address some concerns. I would ask all of you if you are satisfied that those changes have actually moved the needle to where this is going to be a significant improvement to some of the concerns you had. My contention is, they have not. But at the end of the day, as I had said before, if you want to see the future of Breeze Hill and that area, all you need to do is to look at Hacienda and look at Pomelo and what's happening on the other side of that neighborhood, and that is the future. And I encourage everybody, I would even beg you to do so if you haven't already, is if you haven't seen this for yourself, please take a look. There's no way that you can get a sense of this with just looking at a map and looking at a city code. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, state your name and give your address, please.
My name is Antonio Madrid. I live on 4015 Lonnie Street. I have close family members who drive around this area, and my concerns have already been answered by someone who already gave a presentation, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Roy Pearson. I live at 1157 La Tortuga Drive, and I've been there since that housing tract was built in about 26 years ago. I have a few comments on the Breeze Hill development. Some of the comments that I have here are already written down, and I will give them to you anyway, in the event that some of the information has already been taken care of by other people. I was present at the last commission meeting regarding the development. I have also attended an open city meeting regarding new parking requirements for the city. One concern I have is traffic and traffic safety. Breeze Hill has become a very busy roadway. The Avalon Apartments are not currently fully occupied and still have added significantly to the vehicle and pedestrian traffic issues. This includes young children coming home from Breeze Hill School. The last Sandag report, traffic report, is from 2002. This report is outdated and not relevant to any issues today. Estimates and projections using this report cannot be valid. Avalon has had a major impact on traffic and parking between Avalon and Charlemont Developments. All the street parking on Breeze Hill, as you saw in that video, is taken and it's full. We cannot put another complex across the street and add to that parking and driving issue. Neighborhood safety is also my concern. I'm a retired police officer with 28 years' experience. I have personally dealt with issues regarding multiple overcrowded apartment complexes. As a complex gets older, the crime issues increase. These include thefts, vandalism, drug use in public areas, and assaults. And one of the major issues that we used to get were over-parking. Somebody parking in my spot, somebody's car being towed by the development because they didn't have a sticker in the proper position. With current economic conditions, multiple families and roommates have started occupying a single apartment. More people living there means more cars. The reality is that there is a car for every person. One car for a family or a household went out in the 1980s. Today's couples all have two cars. It makes sense to require more parking spaces. I have personally seen people park on La Tortuga and walk to the Avalon Apartments and park on La Tortuga and walk to the apartments on Pomelo, a couple of blocks. As I understand it, the Breeze Hill project is zoned for mixed use. To me, that means residential and commercial usage on-site. This project consists only of residential use. There is no business related to the spaces in this development included. It should be held that the parking requirements should follow 18.54.050 subsection G of the municipal code, which mandates parking. I have discussed this development with several of my neighbors who share the same concerns and against this project. Many would be here tonight, except they have holiday commitments and were concerned with the debate on TV. It is unfortunate they could not be here due to the timing of this event. And finally, the developer has not worked with the neighborhood or contacted any of us, as the planning commission requested. They say the issues brought up by the neighbors are our problems and the city's problems. This should clearly show the developer does not care about the community. They want to build, dump, and leave. Thank you.
Bill Martin, please. State your name and address, please, Mr. Martin. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Bill Martin, 753 Venus View. It's interesting how we're kind of being victimized by the success of our own general plan. And so kind of on a global perspective, maybe what we need to do is start thinking about contracting that mixed-use land designation, because, let's face it, we're not getting mixed-use development, we're getting apartments, and we're turning into a rental community. That being said, I want to thank the applicant and their team for some of the changes they've made to the site plan. Moving the buildings off of Breeze Hill certainly is a positive development for the project. But I really want to focus kind of on the mass and scale issue of the project. And let's take a look at the different neighborhoods we have on the north side and the south side of Breeze Hill Road. On the north side, you have Avalon, three- and four-story, a huge institutional complex next to it, a well-run commercial center that's very vibrant. On the south side, it's much different, much lower density, two-story condominium development Charlemont. You have a school, you have the open fields associated with that. You have a very different experience on the north side of Breeze Hill versus on the south side. And so what they're trying to do is they're trying to import that north vision experience down over to the southern side of Breeze Hill. And I think what they really need to do from a mass and scale issue is start incorporating some two-story elements into their project, similar to what you have at Charlemont. Certainly along the front buildings on Breeze Hill, that needs to be incorporated, but it's really something that needs to be brought into the project. From a design perspective, I like the change, as many probably would if they were willing to say something positive about the project. But I think it needs to have one more pass architecturally. I think Mr. Carrier has done a good job, but if you look at the elevations, and we've all just kind of quickly looked at them, I think what I'm seeing is that it's still blocky buildings, the fronts have some elements on them, the sides and rears are pretty much neglected as usual. And it looks to me like it's just overly value-engineered at this point, and I think that the architecture just needs one more pass. So those are my comments, and I hope you'll take them into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Rebecca Steltman, 1084 La Tortuga Drive. So I do thank them for making those minor changes. However, I say for myself and our community that we're still against this project as apartments. San Diego County needs places for people to live, but having this high-density apartment in this location in my community is not where it should go. So I'm just stating what everybody has also said. Due to the density of the project, that hasn't changed, nine less. Woo-hoo. And now the parking has decreased from 169 spaces to 165 spaces, and that's still nine more, but that's still not enough. Unless the community could sustain itself without extra street parking, it's not enough. So the increase in people, increase in cars, the increase in safety issues, I'm still extremely concerned about the driveway where people are coming in and out, right next to the driveway of Charlemont. So there's going to be two parallel driveways. I don't see how, when I have my baby, I can be walking there and not get hit by two cars coming out of that space. And there's not a way to walk any other directions besides in the housing complex. There are no sidewalks if you go out Melrose towards trying to walk to school. This is the only way those children will be able to walk to school, and that wasn't dealt with. That's very, very concerning for me. And it sounds like that there's the excuse of changing the zoning or changing the city requirements. If those are the issues, then we need to hit it at the city level. If those are the issues, then we need to hit it at the city level, so that way, we're keeping the developers accountable to what the community needs are. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. B Hammer, please. After we hear from B, I have a speaker slip for Frank. And then, I have a speaker slip that someone started to fill out, but they didn't put their name on it. So if you're expecting to, you know, to speak, come on up, and Ms. Turley will give you your speaker slip back. You can put your name. Thank you.
Good evening. I live at Charlemont, and I want to thank you for letting me speak. However, I was a little bit late because of the traffic. I couldn't, it took me 10 minutes to go from Breeze Hill Road, which is a short distance from, I live at the first entrance, to get onto Melrose. It is so backed up, I had to wait for two lights before I could even get on the street. And there were still cars behind me trying to get on Melrose. The congestion is horrible. The emissions from the traffic is terrible. It's going to get worse with more apartments. And I understand that they're all developers, and all I can see is dollar signs in their eyes, which we all want money. But we're losing two grocery stores in the area, Vons', and we're losing Ralph's'. To me, that would be a better building to build in there, so that we would still have access to our community, and that children would still be safer. It's so much congestion now. How can you put in 90 more units? And not everybody has one car. We have units in our complex where they have four cars, and it's a three-bedroom. So you add on, say, three or four more cars to each unit, how are you ever going to get onto Melrose? And watching the children come home from school, because I'm retired and I love seeing them, they have to wait for the traffic now to even cross the driveway into our complex in order to go up the street and go to their homes on Tortuga or in the complex or whatever. And a lot of times, these little kids are running, you have to be very careful, and a lot of cars have almost hit these children. And then, by putting four-story units, I'm not going to get any sunshine. I'm going to be like a mole, because four stories behind there will block off all the sunshine that I get. And all the, on that area, when you come into the first complex, the driveway, we will get no sunshine. And that's not healthy for me. I need all the sunshine I can get, because I don't know how much longer I have, okay? So I'm just saying, I think it's great to put something there, but not apartments. Give us a grocery store. Give us a 7-Eleven, something that you can still make profit on. But be aware that we are human, we're not moles, and we need the sunshine, we need to know that we're not confined. And another problem, like with the Avalons, we are already having problems with some of those people. They come over and they smoke in front of our units. We've had to call the police. They throw their cigarette butts all over, and you don't know who moves into apartments. At least in the condominium, you know they're homeowners. But this is a very dangerous situation. I'm 74, and I'm afraid now to walk down the street and around the block, because I don't know who's in those apartments. And you see people hanging around, and you think, well, gee, am I safe or not? So unless I walk with somebody, I can't even walk around the block anymore. So there's a lot of safety issues, not only for the children, but for old people like me or anybody in the community. And that gentleman who spoke earlier, there is going to be a lot of crime, because they're not going to investigate people who move into those apartments. All they're going to want is the money for the apartment. And people will double up in those apartments, because sometimes people can't afford to rent an apartment, so they live with other people. And that's too much congestion, and it's not safe for anybody. And the emissions are terrible even now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
It's harder than it is. Okay, I just have a handout if I could. I have mine.
Sure.
I live at 765 Las Palmas Drive. My wife is a schoolteacher down at Breeze Hill Elementary School, so we look right down at this property. And she's been a teacher there 20 years. We've lived in our house for about 23. And, you know, before I get started, I wanted to read something that was in the paper last week. It had to do with a different project. It was the one downtown where the city has just decided to switch some land and develop that nice big piece of property down there in downtown. And they were talking about the developer. And I noticed Councilwoman Amanda Rigby was against it, and she voted for it. And this is what she said to the developer. "I'm going to vote to trust you, to entrust to you the continued charm and community feeling of this property." And of course, that's a center point of Vista down there. And the funny thing is, is that's how we should feel about all these projects. They shouldn't be any different. Now, it sounds, I'm a little deflated here tonight, because after listening to Mr. Conley, there's not really a lot we're going to be able to do here. We all realize that, let's be honest, okay? You can't do anything about density, apparently. So I thought I'd pass out those pictures anyway. By the way, the audience, those are pictures of the traffic and the parking on Hacienda and Pomelo and stuff, and they were put up on the screen earlier. And the truth is, nothing's going to happen here. I will compliment the developer. I think the design is much better than it was before. I'm not really into that mid-'60s, mid-century, whatever they talk about. I already lived through the '60s, I don't want to live through it again. So I'd ask the architects to please stop doing that, if you would. But anyway, we're not going to be able to do much. So it looks like we got a little better design, and they dropped nine units. My personal opinion is, there should be another 20 to 30 units dropped off this project. If you drive down Breeze Hill and look in front of this property, those pictures I took there, two of them were Sunday, there are seven spots in front. And guys, let's not kid ourselves, people are parking on the streets. We're not supposed to count it, we're not supposed to talk about it. We go down Hacienda, go down Pomelo, it's a mess. So I guess the reason I decided to talk, I actually sat there and thought, well, why am I talking tonight? Is that you may have some input on some things coming down the road. This is probably lost. I think we're going to get the apartments. I would ask the developer the same thing. Please, we'd like to entrust you the continued charm of our community. And that really would be asking you to knock off probably another 20 or so units, but you're not going to do it, okay? The developer will develop. I used to work for developers, so I know how the game's played. You ask for more at the beginning, you know what you really want, you end up with it, and you're happy. The developer's going to develop. I noticed tonight, we have two more developments for apartments. It's coming. It's like a wave. And really, I think the only thing that's going to stop it is what we saw earlier. Once they start handing out free microwaves, once they start giving out one free month's rent, the construction will stop, some of them will get in financial trouble, the developers, the banks will stop lending, and we'll move on to the next wave, or we'll move into a recession. I mean, let's face it, that's the truth here. But please look at those pictures of all that traffic, because those apartments are filling up those streets, and these guys have seven spots out on the street. And I didn't take a picture of it, but I counted 26 cars sitting in the county complex on Sunday night, right up against the street. They weren't there for work. There were cars there because there's no place to park. So I just want to sort of lay the groundwork that if you are on committees, if you're talking to the city council and stuff, obvious that this 1.5 cars per unit or one car per unit, it's a joke, and we all know it, okay? So I hope you do a good job building the project. Welcome to the community. Looks like we're going to have 91 apartments, and if you could ask them to be, I do want to question the tandem parking. I think that tells you right there that there's not enough parking here. But hopefully, Vista will maybe change its way down the road, and we'll get better projects, and it will be what she said, continued charm of the community of the property. So thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I certainly appreciate this early design review process. It's very good, and I appreciate the design changes from the Artitect. You know my opinion of the city hall being a sore thumb here that the Artitect designed, but there are improvements between the first phase and the second round of this design. I have to agree with many of the people here that the parking continues to be a problem. And, you know, it's a city problem. The city needs to change their code to fix this problem, as well as traffic. There's nothing that you can do. You can't add 100 units, 90 units down on Melrose there and not expect traffic to be overloaded, going to and from work in the morning and in the afternoon. There's too many apartments in Vista. We continue to build more and more apartments. We just built two apartment complexes in downtown Vista, and I'm the president of the Downtown Association right now, that I was opposed to, where there were 70 units just south of East Vista Way, and another 70 units north of there. And already, you can walk in those areas, and you can see the type of respect that apartment dwellers oftentimes bring to the community. There's trash in the area, and it's a brand-new complex. If you look in the '70s and '80s of the apartments that were built in Vista, what do we call that place now? We call that the barrio. And that's what this place is going to turn to in another 10 or 20 or 30 years. So we have too many apartments. You know, yes, San Diego needs more places for people to live. Vista doesn't necessarily need to welcome them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, again. Thank you for your patience. This is the third time we've been here, and I debated about speaking tonight, because you have been so incredibly patient. But I feel compelled. So we were disappointed that, after the last meeting, we did feel heard, very much so. And we felt the direction that was given to the developer was, this is no fluke. The community is concerned, please work with them, and even consider it a mixed use. And tonight, the developer said, well, that's not what we do. Maybe he's not the right developer for this piece of property. This is our community. These decisions affect our home. And I ask if any one of you would want this in your community. I have watched my neighborhood get surrounded by apartments. We have trash in our streets, we have people parking in our neighborhoods. Avalon isn't even fully rented yet, and the cars are pushing into our neighborhood streets. We pay taxes. There are people that cannot even park in front of their own homes, because the apartments have pushed the condominiums into our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has become the de facto recreation area for the apartments. While there's amenities, people need places to walk, jog, and run. And Vista, try as they may, does not have a well-developed, robust trail system. So our neighborhood has become the de facto area where people exercise. So another 91 apartments. It's very dense. Where will those people go? Our park is six acres. I don't know if you saw it on that map, but there's not any other parks around in our area, and places for people to go. Wilmington Homes did work with the community, they approached us. We were very grateful for that opportunity. I'm also curious why, when this piece of land was rezoned, what was the criteria used to say, hey, all this land can really support this parking? I don't know what the formula was used, but it's pretty apparent, without the 91 units, there is no parking. I'm not sure where we're supposed to put these people. And I also wonder why, if it's mixed use, which, at the parking standards meeting, there was an ebb and flow, people shared parking, why, if this is all residential, aren't they held to a higher standard for parking? And also, there are things about the general plan, about putting this kind of density next to residential units, that I don't think has been talked about. And I know that tonight, we're here to talk about architecture, but this will come back for a vote. And the commission, at that time, could find that this does not fit in our neighborhood. And I would hope that the direction tonight is to really work with us. So lastly, I just wanted to show this to you, because it kind of hit me over the head when it came to my door. This is from the city of Vista. And it says, be the change you want to see. And these folks here, this is the heart of the holiday season, and these people are here tonight, because we care about our community. And we'd like to be the change that we want to see in our community. So I thank you very much for your kind attention, and I really hope that Mr. Gill will work with our community in a very heartfelt and genuine way, to find something that we can all live with for the foreseeable future. Because I know what's happened to Ballatero Apartments and what we live with every day. Thank you kindly.
Does she want to speak on this item? Come on up. Rebecca, come on up. State your name and give your address, please.
Hi, Rebecca Reader, 730 Breeze Hill Road, Charlemont Apartments. Basically, I moved here to Vista because it was a country town. It was grass, hardly any traffic, hardly anything. I actually moved here because I have horses. We had horses almost on every neighborhood, every block. Up to six months ago, I would ride down Breeze Hill. People loved it. Now, ever since the apartments across the street went in, I can no longer ride. People can't enjoy any country. Since the apartments went in, we're also getting a lot of crime. There's reports across the street, we've gone over there, filed reports, saying, you know, we've got guys coming on our side of the street, which is the Charlemont. Sorry, I'm nervous, I'm used to being on a horse, not on the ground. Anyway, we called the police. We caught them coming over, breaking into somebody's Mercedes. We were walking to our mailbox, the two guys confronted us, they stopped and said, what do you guys think you're doing? You guys are sure nosy. As they were going around the Mercedes, trying to break into it. And then, they went back across the street. We've got a lot of police action going across the street, a lot of crime, and we're frankly worried. My boyfriend plays basketball at the small park. He said, there's no room now. There's just too many people. And this has been for 20 years, and it's been a great little park. Now, with so much people playing on the park, there's no room. Where is anyone going to exercise? Where are people going to play? Where are kids going to go? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Give your name and your address, please.
My name is Larry Kent. I live at 1369 Melrose Way. I've been listening to the discussion by the community and also by the developer, and I kind of scratched my head, because the developer makes the comparison or a parallel to downtown San Diego. And downtown San Diego, for many, many years, was an eyesore, and it has changed considerably. There are sections of downtown San Diego, of course, that are lacking, but Vista has not been lacking, and that side of Melrose has been growing very, very quickly. And why not move, why not have apartments much further south on Melrose? Why, right next to Avalon? I'm sorry that the, I'm a businessman myself, Mr. Gill, and we've been in the area for almost 40 years. We have locations, two in Vista and one in San Marcos. We've seen the growth, and it's just getting out of hand. And the center that you have could thrive if you look across the street and see what's going on there. They took them quite a while to get going, the ethnic restaurants and the Original House of Pancakes, the brewery there, they went out of business, they bought the property, but they came back. So it is possible to make that center thrive. And if you had something like a movie theater there, we only have one movie theater in town. We have a population of almost 100,000 people in Vista. That doesn't make sense. If we had some restaurants, we had someone who mentioned a convenience store, or another grocery store in the area, it'd make a big difference, and people would walk to this. We wouldn't have the congestion that we have today. And it's getting worse and worse. And the pollution, I mean, if someone took a pollution index, whatever you want to call it. So, I'm just, I hope you're going to consider those concerns, and I would squash this and have them move further south. That's what needs to be done. Put a grocery center in there, put something else there that will make the people come to. So, it's always needed. So, thank you again.
Okay, I have no more speaker slips, so we are going on to the commissioners' questions regarding, and what I prepared based on our last meeting that we had, and this is information for you, is we got together and we created a little checklist of the things we're going to talk about, so that keeps us on track. So, we will, first item will be the site design, then go on to grading, topography, the architecture, landscape, et cetera. And for each one of those items, we're going to go straight down and catch every one of the commissioners' comments. And this really facilitates the applicant and, you know, makes your punch list a little bit better, we think. So, starting with that, would you like to start us off, Commissioner Garretson, with any comments or questions regarding the site design?
I guess my biggest concern on site design relates to the park next door and the safety, and we'll get to those. But somehow, it seems like the designers designed this apartment complex that nobody's going to go to the park unless they go all the way around Breeze Hill and all the way around Melrose. I know there's supposed to be a gate, but how do people get to the gate? They're walking across traffic, parked cars backing out where these kids are going to be walking. So, it's the design of the circulation for people to walk to the park that is my major concern.
Mr. Toomey?
Couple of things on the site. Again, looking at this from our city guidelines, there really doesn't seem to be a strong focal point on the property. We've got one coming in from, it would be good to have one coming in from Breeze Hill, and also, I think you've begun to do that from the CVS property. I think one of the possibilities that's been brought up earlier is to relocate the westernmost drive onto the property, maybe between those two buildings that you have on Breeze Hill. Currently, you've got a pedestrian access, but you could really put that drive in the very center of that property, where the main focal point would be your, I think it's the admin office, pretty much in the very center of the property. I think that would be helpful. I think having a little bit more variation on the building setback from Breeze Hill would be to your advantage. We've got two buildings that are all in the same wall plane relative to the street. I think if you could break that up, that would be better with the site design. Parking areas and drives, I'll address that under the different category.
Thank you.
Yes, I've got some concerns. When we're talking about the density of it, and I assume that would be where site design might fall into, is how dense it is. I heard a lot of people saying, and I feel the same way, there's a lot of apartments in that area, in that building that you're building, that condominium, that unit, that whole unit, there's going to be a lot of apartments in there. And I have seen those streets at different times. I've gone down there to take a look at different times on Lotte Two, going Breeze Hill. And those are congested streets, no matter what time you go down. I understand that, well, that would be traffic or whatever, I guess, down here. But as far as the density is concerned, it was mentioned by former Commissioner Martin that about two-story. That would not be a bad deal if you could reduce some way to, the fact is, you're putting a lot more people in an area there that is going to be tough to deal with, and that's my biggest concern. I don't know really how to get it undone, how to unring this bell, but it's what it is, so that's me.
Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Carroll, please.
I don't have any comments regarding site design.
Thank you. My comments is, we'll address parking when we get to parking, but considering the parking and the site design and former Commissioner Martin's comments about, like, being encompassed by this complex, and my thought is, is it possible for, what is it, Buildings Four, Five, Six, and Seven to be two-story and then let the other buildings towards the back of the project then get the height into it so that it's not so much on the street? Those are my comments for site design. Commissioner Rosler?
I have two, first, they've addressed the site design concerns that we had last time. They've moved the buildings back. They've made an effort to address our concerns. I'm concerned about the tandem parking, and then the access into the park goes between one of the small parking structures and the trash enclosure. And I didn't, I think they can do something better, move the trash enclosure and open that access to the park up, so those are my comments.
Commissioner Jackal, please.
I have to say, first of all, for anything, I'm deeply disappointed that Silvergate did not contact the neighborhood. That's not respectful, in my view, of the neighborhood. And my other comment is, it still seems really, really dense.
Next, we'll move on to grading and topography. Are there any comments that you'd like to make, Commissioner Garretson?
No, not on that subject. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Carroll?
Pass.
None from me. Commissioner Rosler? Commissioner, okay, okay. Next is the architecture. Commissioner Garretson? Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I got two points. One, I think the idea of two-story elements along Breeze Hill is something worth considering. Maybe not all of the buildings or all of the units on that street should be two-story, but I think you could create a little bit more interest by developing two- and three-story massing elements along, in those units. You brought up Irving Gill, phenomenal architect. His style had a lot of variety. He played with shadows and shapes. And I think if you took his design elements into a smaller-scale building rather than these two large units that are on the street, I think it might work for you. But I think a lot of Irving Gill's details were lost in the bulk of what is being proposed. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming?
Just to reiterate, the density seemed, if we could find a way to cut the density back some.
Commissioner Carroll, architecture?
Thank you, Chairman. I may have been one of the few, I wasn't really opposed to the previous architectural style and some of the shed roofs and butterfly-type rooftops. I think falling back on some of these older styles is, in the end, going to hold back the city and an evolution into a more modern-looking area. Some of the side elevations and the rear elevations, I think, of this new plan need some more detail and more pop. And they're a little bit plain with perhaps some trellis colors, trellis coverings, trellis awnings to match what's on the front. Additional reveals or color changes would be my suggestion for those.
Thank you. My comments is, I was glad that we were heard. I like the new architecture. The Santa Barbara style, I think, is very lovely, and I think it's a little, it's softer for the neighborhood. I agree with Commissioner Carroll's comments. I wrote myself a note, "Elevation Number Two needs to be dressed up." It's like the backside was just blank with windows, and there was nothing sexy on the backside that equaled what you've done on the other sides of the building, so that's my comment. Thank you for listening. Commissioner Rosler?
I'm concerned when the retired planner agrees with the civil engineer about architecture. That's, I have the same comments on the backside. They're facing driveways going in, but there are points in the project where that driveway is visible from the public right-of-way. And so, the back elevations need to be enhanced. Let's leave it at that. And thank them for the garages, the single-car garages that are adjacent to the park. Thank you for the pitch roof and the additional relief on the backside of that building. Much improved, so.
Commissioner Jackal?
I will echo former Commissioner Martin's comments and the rest of you. I agree with all you've said, especially the, so you put all your attention to the fronts of the buildings and neglected the other three sides. And with the flat roofs that there are, I'm assuming that all the roof equipment and stuff would be screened, concealed somehow. It will be visible, and I guess that's it.
Commissioner Jackal, you want to keep going on landscape, and we'll go back down through?
I don't think I really had anything about landscaping.
Commissioner Rosler?
I think the direction that they've gone, taking out the turf and going to the more drought-tolerant setting in their plaza area, was a step in the right direction.
I'm appreciative that you're keeping the already full-size trees and relocating them as necessary on the project. Commissioner Carroll?
No comments.
Commissioner Fleming?
Yeah, I like the fact that you listened to us last time about moving it back from Breeze Hill to get a little bit, so it looks really nice, the way you've got it laid out there. The landscaping overall, I think, is a positive.
Commissioner Looney? We'll go back to Commissioner Jackal, and we'll start with parking and driveways. Or if I could interject before you start and ask the applicant to come and tell us more information about what you have in mind for tandem parking, because I don't understand that.
First of all, I just want to reclarify the fact that there is one parking space per bed in this project, and there are 25 guest parking spaces within this complex, you know, which is a pretty significant amount of parking. And as I mentioned, we are nine over the city standard. I mean, I guess we feel we have a different opinion about the amount of parking that really should be needed. We can't imagine how any of our tenants or their guests are going to be parking on the street. Tandem parking is something that we have incorporated into other projects, into two-bedroom units. There's an old saying in design that form follows parking, and the least damaging way we could accommodate additional parking into this project was to do some tandem spaces in probably the least obtrusive place that we could find on the project, and that really was the rationale behind what we did. We wanted to be responsive and give beyond the minimum amount of parking that was necessary under the code. With the loss of the five spaces where we responded to turn them to parallel spaces, it reduced our ability to find other solutions.
So, by tandem parking, is this my two-bedroom unit, two cars, and one pulls in, one pulls in behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have explained, yeah, exactly. So, that you have to, whoever, you know, your spouse, you're going to have to make an arrangement if you want to move the car in the front out. Yeah, that's right.
Or you're changing cars every day, because she'll go in in one and come out with the other.
That's right.
So, it's, and those are for the designated group of two-bedroom units.
That's right. And the only other thing I'd mention about the parking, a lot of the comments I've heard tonight, and I understand the prejudice about apartments and about a lack of pride of ownership and potential crime and trash and so on, these are all management issues. We really pride ourselves on the way our complexes are managed, and you don't allow two or three families to move into a two-bedroom unit. Again, you've managed the parking, and, you know, you enforce things. If you go allow pets in your project, you DNA the pets. And if people don't clean up after their pets, you have a way of finding the people that caused the problem. So, I think an awful lot of what is being expressed as valid concerns here tonight are dealt with by good, you know, professional management. And it doesn't matter how old your project is. I have a project that's 35 years old in Nestor in San Diego, all two and three-bedroom units. It's beautifully managed. It's not a slum, far from it. I don't think that needs to be the case at all.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining the tandem parking. Commissioner Jackal, do you want to start us off on parking and driveways?
Okay, thank you. I liked Mr. Looney's, Commissioner Looney's suggestion about moving the driveway. I thought that was a very good idea, and it would help with the proximity to the driveway from Charlemont next door. One space per bed is all very well, but if it's a double bed, there's two people, and that, you know, that doesn't mean that there's enough parking. And I was wondering about visitor parking, kind of where it is, especially for the apartments on the north and east side of the project. Are visitors going to be able to park easily?
Commissioner Rosler?
Yes, as I said, under site design, and I am concerned about the tandem parking and the management of it. In the places that I've seen it done before, they've been fairly dense projects that have been in an urban core, and they've been done on purpose to provide the parking. You know, with the photographs that we've seen of the neighborhood, there's, it seems to me that taking this next step might be a good solution. I don't like tandem parking because it creates hassles between tenants and car owners, but with the, given the parking that's out on the street right now, this might be an acceptable solution. But I'm expressing my concern, I'm reserving my judgment, and we'll see how they do when they submit.
I think the parking will remain to be an issue until the parking standards are changed. I hope that you have an incredible parking management plan, because that's going to be extremely important, as you said, Mr. Gill, for this project. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I'm okay with the tandem parking. It's, as I understand it, these will be reserved It's, as I understand it, these will be reserved spots for particular units. And so the management of that front and back place will be within one apartment unit. And, you know, I would, of course, rather have that than not have those seven spaces. And I appreciate, I appreciate that there is more parking being provided than what's required. And that, that's even with the applicant modifying the parking near the entrance on the east side to parallel parking. Because that was one of the concerns I brought up. I just felt there was going to be a safety concern backing, backing out of those spots as people are pulling in that driveway, pulling in kind of fast, maybe to miss an oncoming, you know, to get out of the oncoming traffic. And I just felt that was an issue and I'm glad that that's been addressed. Now, the parallel parking on the south end, on the southeast corner, I don't have those same concerns, safety concerns. And I think that's an area where you could pick up more parking. I guess you're kind of limited by the property line there, but, yeah, I guess I think it's a property line issue there that's holding you back from diagonal parking now that I see the property line there. But I don't have those types of concerns with intermixing of traffic in that southeast area. And I'm glad it's been addressed of the northeast.
Commissioner Fleming? Any comments on parking and driveways?
Yes, I think that we need, as far as the city, to look at our parking. And as someone said earlier, the areas in which we allow this sort of multi-use, what is multi-use, what isn't multi-use, we need to really take another look at that, maybe. As Commissioner Jackal said, one bedroom, one space, sounds good, but then that bedroom, that bed's got two people sleeping in it and there's a real good chance both of them have got cars. The cities have tried more and more to go to urbanization, to have more dense areas. But usually those are designed to go as close as possible to transit centers, such as the Sprinter. That's why we went with the two buildings that we have on Santa Fe, because they were in real close proximity to the transit centers. This is not real close to a transit center. And that concerns me, too. I understand what was said early on that before we really started this, that we don't have a lot of leeway in what's done, because what is legal and right is right and you've got every right to develop your property. And we don't have the right to stop you. I mean, it's your property. But all we can do is give you guidance. And I would hope that you could find a way to maybe have a meeting or two with these people again, to explain to them, as you did to us, about the tandem parking. Just to maybe have a little one-on-one with them and that might help, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Looney, please?
Yeah, just a couple of points, thank you. Something that might reduce the parking issue, I don't know, it's an idea, but if you took that parking area that you have proposed on the south, this area through here, what would happen, and this hypothetical question, but if you took that parking area and if you put it over along on the east side, where rather than residents and their guests overflowing onto Breeze Hill, that they come in and begin to utilize some of the commercial parking spaces that are typically open. CVS has customers, but very seldom have I seen both of those parking lots filled. It would be a step where you have to rearrange some of your building placements, but it might ease some of the parking issues to where, basically, you're keeping all the parking areas on one side and redistributing some of the buildings to where guest parking, resident parking is going to fill up that CVS parking space before they park on the street or if they, before they park on the courthouse. Just an idea. And then tandem parking, I think it's a great idea. It comes down to management. And if it's set up, I think it's a great use of space. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please.
I have one issue here that really concerns me, and that is safety in this area here. You have tandem parking here, people backing out all the time, you have cars here backing out, and you have people trying to walk this way to the park. To me, that's a disaster waiting to happen. Is it possible to put a walkway between the two fences? Because the fence that is presently there is a wrought iron fence, and then there's a chain link fence and there's about two or three feet between them. So if there could be some sort of a walkway there, people could walk safely over to the There's a, this is the wrought iron fence and this is the chain link fence. I don't know where the property lines start and stop between the schools and the property owner. But I have great concern about the safety of people walking with all those cars backing in and pulling out. And I know this is like a shopping center, but you don't have that many kids potentially leaving at the same time, plus tandem parking, right in this area. And the only way kids, let's say people that live here, they're going to go this way. And I assume these are sidewalks, walkways. Is that correct? So they would walk this way and over here. Now, are these, these are carports. The garages, I mean. Is there anything to protect the ball fields from headlights? Because all these cars, if they're pulling in, they're going right into the ball fields. Because that's basically the same level as the baseball field. So if you get a bunch of cars pulling in there with headlights, is it going to create a problem for the ball players?
They're landscaping along there.
Well, there are trees there, but all the trees have grown up enough. But anyway, I would be concerned about maybe having some landscaping there to protect the ball fields from the headlights. Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Garretson, how about lighting? Any comments on the lighting? Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Carroll?
No.
Commissioner Rosler? Commissioner Jackal? We all like the lighting. Commissioner Jackal, safety? Commissioner Rosler?
Just the site distance on the second driveway on Breeze Hill, just to make sure that it's coordinated with the driveway and the condominium project next door, so.
None for me. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to second Commissioner Rosler's concerns about the sidewalk running between the trash enclosure and the garage, that's just not going to have a good feel to it there. And that can be improved.
Commissioner Fleming?
No.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Garretson? Commissioner Garretson, project amenities? Commissioner Looney?
Nope.
Commissioner Jackal?
Just one question. I see the community space in the center. Are we assuming that if there are children in the apartments, they're going to go in the park to play?
It's a comment we can make. Where are they to play?
Yeah.
Were you, have you already done amenities?
I haven't.
Okay, amenities. Okay. I like the amenities. I like what you've done. I like the openness. I had the feel that you could come together individually to enjoy the pool or any of the other open space areas, so I thought that was quite well done. Commissioner Carroll, please?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fleming?
No.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Garretson? Last but not least, traffic and pedestrian walkways? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes. Again, my concern is that one area down here and the safety. And I don't know, I just get a bad feel for everybody walking across to go to the field and the safety. And I don't know what the answer is, but there are just too many cars backing out here to make it safe, in my opinion. So the traffic in this area would be a concern as, you know, as they're going, as the kids potentially could be going to the park, hopefully with their parents, but possibly not.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Fleming?
Just to reiterate that I'm concerned about the traffic spilling out onto the streets. You've done an admirable job of what you've done bringing it in, but I'm still concerned about all the traffic that is on the streets there.
Commissioner Carroll?
I have nothing additional.
Commissioner Rosler?
Just one comment. They've done a good job of making a connection to Breeze Hill. I'd like to see at least striping of the parking lot for the pedestrian connection to the existing driveway going out on to Breeze Hill between CVS and the bank. I believe there are sidewalks there and it'd be, I think, beneficial to have a connection between the project and those sidewalks.
Comment. Commissioner Jackal? Mr. Connolly? Did we answer all the questions that you would like to hear from us?
That was a pretty complete review, so thank you for your comments. The applicant has taken all of the notes from this evening and will be back in the future with some revisions to the project.
Mr. Gill, did you and your team understand our comments and the comments from the public? Okay, all right, then we will move on. Thank you so much. Yes, how about a five-minute break, please? Thank you. I don't know. Oh, yeah, there are some.
Well, hey, three of those moved here. I only have one. I know. Well, because I live in apartments. He's got to be in apartment size, dog. Yeah, somebody else is saying that you're on the north side of the street and then you've got the south side of the street. So it makes it a trauma. It's just, you know. Yeah. Yeah.
Wait till he's ready.
Right.
Find my stick. I keep hiding it. Yeah. Mr. Russler, are you ready? All right, if I may, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Mr. Russler, will you lead us through P-15-0772?
If I can get my slideshow to work here.
Oh.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission. Staff has received a preliminary proposal to develop 90 apartment units on approximately 3.56 acres, generally located southwest of the intersection of Old Taylor Street and East Vista Way. The site, again, is approximately 3.56 acres, maintains two legal parcels, and the site currently is vacant land. The properties to the north, across Old Taylor Street, are developed with multi-tenant office building with a storage yard to the rear, the Vista Fire Department Station Number Three. Properties to the south, developed with multifamily residential development. Properties to the east, across East Vista Way, developed with the Vista Elks Lodge, as well as a multi-tenant office retail development. And the property to the west is developed with an apartment complex. The subject property maintains a general plan land use designation of high-density residential, which allows for 21 units per acre. And the site's also located within the East Vista Way opportunity area within the general plan. The zoning for the property is RM21, multifamily residential, allows for up to two stories and a maximum density of 21 units per acre, consistent with the general plan. Staff has received the proposal to develop the 90 apartment units, which includes a residential density bonus on the subject site. The project would require a site development plan permit, SEQA review, as well as a landscape review. Again, it's 90 units, six separate buildings. The units would be two-story with tuck-under parking. Each unit would maintain two bedrooms. The proposed density for the project is 25.3 dwelling units per acre, and that includes a 20% density bonus for providing affordable housing opportunities, which equates to 15 units in terms of the density bonus. In order to receive the density bonus, the project must reserve 5% of the units on-site for very low-income families, which equates to three units. The 5.6-acre site, again, would be developed with six buildings ranging from 6 to 24 units per building. The site would provide a total of 186 parking spaces. The applicant is requesting the parking requirement for the project be pursuant to state requirements, which prescribes two parking spaces per two-bedroom units. And that's in relation to it being an affordable housing density bonus project. The site maintains two large open space areas totaling 11,000 square feet. And within that area, the project would provide a pavilion community room as well as a community park. Although the submitted plans do not include a concession associated with the affordability component of the project, the applicant may request a waiver from building setbacks in order to help accommodate the onsite improvements. In terms of architecture, the proposed development would feature a Santa Barbara architectural style. The apartment buildings, again, would be two-stories, maintaining Spanish tile gable roofs. Exterior finishes would include smooth stucco exterior, ornamental balcony railings, decorative exposed outlookers, accent tiles, as well as wood shutters. Each unit would maintain 985 square feet. That, within that square footage, the unit would maintain two bedrooms, two bathrooms, living room, dining room, kitchen, as well as laundry facilities. With that, staff is requesting the planning commission provide the applicant comments related to the proposed design of the project, the applicant, as well as the architect. Ken Chris is here to provide additional presentation in terms of the architectural style, as well as the site layout for the proposed development. And that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Russler, could you, I have a few questions concerning the density calculation. So let me just go through those. The 74.76 units, so that's being called 75 units?
That's correct.
And then if you do the math backwards on that, then the density comes out higher than 21 units per acre by when you round up? Is that standard procedure for the city?
Um, John, yeah, that is, you round up in terms of the percentages. If it exceeds a whole number, that's correct.
Okay, so they're at 75 units, and then if 5%, 5% of those would be low-density units, I think that comes out to four.
Actually, it comes to three point, and it's a percent. However, the code prescribes that you round down in terms of the number of affordable units pursuant to the city's density bonus ordinance.
Okay. Got it. So we got two sides of the coin there. Okay, that's fine. Now, I have a... On Old Taylor Street, is there additional right-of-way being granted as part of this project?
As of right now, all we have is conceptual drawings. But when the formal grading and grading plans and site plan is submitted, that those would be routed to our Public Works and Engineering Division to confirm that adequate right-of-way would be provided associated with the project.
Okay, so we don't know that yet?
Conceptual drawings.
I believe in the pre-application that there was a five-foot dedication required along Old Taylor, if I'm not mistaken, Patsy. Yeah, I think it's a 50-foot road, and they have to dedicate five additional feet.
Okay, what I'm getting at with that is, the 3.56 acres, is that, is that an area pre-road dedication or after dedication? And how does that figure into the density calculation? I know this is kind of maybe too detailed for a design review here, but I'm trying to understand how the density gets calculated because of...
It's a good point. It's based on the net density of the site. If they have to dedicate additional right-of-way along Old Taylor, it would reduce the net density calculation for the property, and so it could affect their density bonus requests. It's something we'll have to look at.
Okay, so that remains to be seen, but I just wanted to bring it up. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Commissioner Rossler?
Two questions. In the back of the staff report, there's an affordable housing report that was revised November 9th of this year. And if we go to the last page, it says rent restrictions. And since these are all going to be two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, the rents are going to be restricted to $746 a month for the three units?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
643, right?
Actually, the first column is household size, the second column is unit size, so they're two bedrooms. So if I read that right. So, okay. And then transit lines run up and down East Vista Way. Do we know where the closest bus stop is for this project?
I don't have that information.
I'd be interested in knowing that when the project comes back.
Make sure that we notate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Following up on the bus line, how close is this to the Sprinter line?
Miles-wise.
Oh, will it go anywhere?
No.
Okay. Are we required to accept the density bonus part of this?
That's a state requirement, unfortunately, yes. There's no leeway, I guess, at that point, as long as they maintain the requirements of the state.
Okay, I just, here we are again, too dense.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I've got three questions. In a proposed development like this, does the city require for the utilities to be placed underground? There's a lot of unsightly power poles along Old Taylor.
That would be a part of, that would be a city requirement, and that'd be associated with the entitlement process. That's correct.
Okay, second point. In your proposal or in your presentation, you stated that there was community parks or park areas on the site. I see one over, kind of right on the street of Vista Way, between Buildings Two and Three. Does that designate a community park or a community area?
The plan identifies a park along East Vista Way, as well as a park area at the southwest corner of the site. One's labeled Park B and Park A. Park A includes the pavilion community room, and Park B is the area surrounding the business office.
Okay. It looks like there's a two-to-one slope or one-to-one slope on that back edge. Third point, does the low-income designation negate the applicant from proposing site amenities?
As I recall, no. Actually, there's, there is nothing that prevents them or, yeah, prevents them from providing what's required by our code in terms of site amenity. No, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Three questions. First of all, drainage. Where is all the water going to drain from this site? Vista Way is much higher. It's all dirt, and it drains now into this property. Once this is developed, there's going to be more water draining Old Taylor and over to Taylor Street. What's going to be the requirement for drainage?
At this point, we have a conceptual plan. I know the architect's here. He probably has a better idea in terms of how he's going to address that. Ultimately, they'll be providing us studies prior to the entitlement process that our engineering division would be able to analyze and...
So it's too early to really get specific on that?
That's correct.
Sewer and drainage?
That's correct.
Same thing?
However, like I said, the project architect is here, so he could give you an idea of what direction he was going to take in terms of the improvement.
Because I talked to one of the neighbors on Taylor Street, and they talked about, maybe three blocks away, they have septic system. So I don't know where the sewer system goes through there or...
They are required to connect to the sewer system. There's no alternative to that. So wherever the nearest sewer is, is where they're going to have to build to. Same thing for the drainage. They have to accept and treat and retain all of the water that comes on the site. We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet because of the state we're at.
Right.
But requirement nonetheless.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I said three questions. Sidewalks, the same thing?
That's correct.
Walkways?
Again, would be associated with the entitlement package.
Mr. Russler, you say the architect, I don't have any speaker slip except for Ursula Sack. Are you the architect?
Actually, Ken Chris is here. He has probably put together a few words in terms of the architecture, so...
Perfect.
Might be best to have him come up and then...
Please.
Good evening. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. My name is Ken Chris. I have an office at 1561 Comerant Drive in Carlsbad. And it's nice to be here, and my old working companion, I'm fessing up with Rick Rossler, and I have done tons and tons of work together before he retired. So that's good. Good questions that you ask, and hopefully I can cover them quickly for you. First thing, it's kind of interesting. I want to go into the family and what's all involved and who's developing it. And the client says, "Well, Ken, tell them about yourself." And that's okay. I'll try to hold it very quick. Yes, I'm an architect. I've been here 42 years. I've also done, you've heard every Gill used three, used tonight, I've actually rebuilt three of his buildings. And I do understand what Santa Barbara architecture is about. So that's kind of a slam on somebody else that left already. So thank you. I appreciate that. That was a nice to say, but I also had to defend what we're doing out of this. The client approached me probably about a year ago with this. It's the Voza family. They're four generations now living here in Vista. They own the apartments to the east. They own the office to the north. So the big owners around the community are them. They build and own and operate, manage everything they do. So when they came to me and we started talking about it, they really had some requirements about how they use their management to control what they do. And I will say right off the bat, the first thing I hear and every you sit here, parking. Everybody raised their hand, parking, parking. We don't have a problem with parking. We manage it properly. And we make sure that it isn't, because they own these things forever, and they don't want headaches. They want them clean, easy to take care of, happy tenants, pay their bills, hey, here we go. bills, hey, here we go. That's, I think, what everybody wants to have out of this. Can we have the site? The, thank you, Mike. As you mentioned before, there's 30 feet in elevation change on this site. It's raw. It, it had single-family homes on it before. It's kind of a desolate piece out there, among some other larger pieces that also have less-than-great landscaping on them, okay? So, it's kind of like on the way out of town. Here you go. And You're trying, okay. The, here we go. Okay. The one thing that, that, another thing that we dealt with in the construction of the, the design work of this thing is, is the grade. How do you do these grades without big walls all over the place? Well, naturally, you step the buildings. That's pretty easy. And all of these step. All of these are subterranean parking, really tuck-under parking, creating a two-story building. You get a six-foot wall inside the building, sometimes an eight-foot wall, depending on what you control on the outside of it. It's a positive thing to design that way, because what has to happen is, you have to take your little pencil with me, my little red marker, and go around every building and make sure that it's not only recessed, but it's recessed properly, that the grading can happen with it. And it limits the size of the buildings, which, which is good, because you can only do so much before you have to end up taking a big step. There are also a, a good term, not retaining walls, but garden walls, three-foot-high walls, they're all over this place, okay? And it's really to hold the ground, to give you level spaces to build on, to park on, to recreate with. And, and that, that was difficult, I will say that. I also throw a number out here, this is my 12th version of this site, trying to get everything right, everything that works, to, to get the parking, the working elements of all the buildings that are involved in this. So, it was a challenge. There are three driveways off Old Taylor. By the way, Joe built the new Taylor Street, which is kind of interesting, with it, Old Taylor Street. I also did a subdivision on the other side of the street years ago. So, we're familiar with a, with a community in, in general, essentially building it, to, to an extent. We stepped the buildings, we did a lot of solar use out of it for benefit, sounds funny, for the owner. It's a great thing, we get an opportunity to do it, it's a natural the way it fits in, on top of the parting, parking, and the buildings that are stepped, because the next building really can't see it, okay, which is really fascinating. Always, as an architect, it's great to have solar, but boy, are they ugly. And so, this works out pretty good. You really can't see them. Again, the property even to the south that, or to the east that, excuse me, to the west that Joe owns, it's down another 20 feet. So, they also can't even see the angled parking on the carport areas, which are all solar, which comes out pretty good. The three streets, Old Town Planning. You go onto the site, the far end has something exciting on it. In this case, walkways, a different view of building at an angle, okay? And that happens on all, all three of the streets. The grades gave you the opportunity to do something, which you rarely get to do. You, you create these walkways with amenities. You create them with, with archway columns, you create them with garden walls and raised planters. So, the sites really dictating that you're going to do a really interesting project and doing some really good landscaping along with the building, and that gets back to the building. Now can we go to the building? Okay. Building is Santa Barbara. Interesting, if you've worked, I've worked in Santa Barbara. One of the things that you learn is there's only five colors of white, because that's what they say, they will allow only five different colors of white. And that's true. So, accent colors really don't call for this type of style of building. It was selected because it's comfortable, it's soft, it creates community, it creates identity, it makes, it gives you the security that you're not going to a shopping center or someplace that's, you know, got a, got a Starbucks at the end of it, okay? It's truly a residential feel out of this. The landscaping, I try to be colorful with the trees that we select, because they bounce very well, especially on a white surface. There's very few details. The downspouts are used as accents that we control with, doing, the lighting also. Lots of exterior lighting on the walls, and they become accents out of this, on the little pieces of architecture. You don't have to really make it busy to be comfortable. So, that's what we're trying to do with it. Bring them into scale. With these garden walls, I, I love it, because it brings the people to the scale of the buildings. So, I'm, I'm all excited about it, as you can tell, I, I get carried away with it. That, that's what I think I can tell you about that. I'd like to get Laura, who's one of the owners, up here to talk about the affordable. And let me answer some of the questions that you had, referring to the right-of-way. Yes, we build everything. Curbs, gutters, sidewalks, underground, everything. We, our initial design review with staff, they were asking for 10 feet, we got it, got the discussion, pulled some old documents out. We do have the existing right-of-way properly, just the road's not in the right place, okay? So, the, the project is designed with the correct property line locations and the correct improvements that way. Sewer, yes, we're on sewer. Actually, we're connecting to the pre-planned sewer of the project to the west that is already owned. So, that was, that was very good for us. Don't have to cut the street up and all that, we actually connect to an existing sewer line that's been provided over the years. Anything else? Can't remember. Oh, drainage. Boy, it's had a mess. Okay. Drainage, yes. Both streets and everything. Vista Way, we, we've already had trouble, excuse me, on, on North Santa Fe. And worked with staff, city staff, to take care of some of that, because they've done already some improvements there. It will drain properly, it will drain most of it really down, hitting Old Taylor Street. A lot of it will go into existing drainage in, to the built, again, to the building to the east, which is already existing that the client owns. So, yes, and we will have to do a lot more work, but that was the initial concept of the thing. Let me get Laura to talk about the affordable section, and we're available for any questions. Alright, thank you.
You to come to the mic, so we can So we can get you on tape.
Alright, actually, we've prepared a report on the affordable housing that's included in the documents today. So, if you have any further questions, we could go through all the graphs and all the data, but I'm here to answer questions. If you'd want, I could walk you through it, but given the time and the holiday season, I'm open to questions about it.
I don't have a question on that particular item, but I have a question for the applicant regarding the, or the, or the architect regarding the, the location, the sighting location of the Pavilion Community Room. Can you, can you some
Yeah.
your thoughts?
Yeah.
Selected?
I wish I could say, yes, I have it in the center of the whole complex, but no. Looking for a place that's flat enough to use, and we actually ended up having to create a flat spot to be able to, to get enough area to qualify as opening. There's, there's some generous landscape areas, but none of them meet the 30-by-30 square you have to put all over the place with this thing. So, that's how we got that at that location, as a flat area. To put the community room there was kind of good, because it's where the extra overflow, the extra parking that we do have is, and it's also away from the center of the activities. These are two-bedroom units, almost 1,000 feet, okay? They're not going to be cheap, okay? So, man or wife, maybe a child, you get any more than that, and you can pay more than that, you're going to be looking at a house or a condo, okay? Or, a lot of times, retired couple staying there forever. 1,000 feet's very generous out of this. So, being able to put that type of facility where it can be used for a party event, a community meeting or something, that's really what we were looking for at that location, at the far end of the, of the site. It also, again, pulls noise and everything away from the, the center, really. This is not a place that you're going to have, you know, six kids and a family living. It's just too expensive, and it's just not going to happen with it. Again, management wouldn't let you do that either. The, the other one, the other open area was actually guided by staff, because we initially had another, a building running parallel also to North Santa Fe. And it was just too long. The building was, you know, mass and mass and mass. They aren't big buildings, but when you add them, when you line them up, they appear to be connected, and they aren't, okay? So, that one came about by being able to turn the first two buildings themselves off, and it created this open space and a nice big break on the street, visually on the street. So, that's, that's how they got where they were. Hope that helps. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. A couple of questions for you. Where do you envision the outdoor activities taking place in this complex?
Well, the biggest one, we hope, is down by the Pavilion, because that's where the flat area is, the flatter area.
Okay.
It, it does have a slope to it for drainage, but I also had to put three different walls to get it flat, three different garden walls, to be able to get flat enough because of the, the site, to be able to, to count it as actually something that's usable. So, that's where we had, hopefully, that people would do that. It's kind of fun. I envision, you know, mom sitting her kid down to play and being up at the Pavilion and seeing them play out there. That was kind of fun. It's area enough to throw a Fisbee and run the dog and that type of thing.
Okay. On the grading, you had mentioned that you were going to use three-foot-high garden walls?
Yes.
I'm just looking at, again, the preliminary site plan. On the south elevation, where you, in this area right here, the site plan shows an existing grade of 480, and then you show a paved driveway at 494. So, there's a 14-foot discrepancy, or a 14-foot difference
Yes.
that's on the property line. And so, I'm trying to understand, how do we get 14 feet out of three-foot walls when the paving is shown on the property line?
Well, because we, we carried up and we add to the, we add to the value of it. Again, the walls that are exposed there is fine. Those walls aren't necessarily in native, native soil all the time. We, we are keeping them low, the ones in the building jump eight feet. So, the building just ahead of that, you know, pulls it down pretty quick, and then the, that right there is also the largest slope. I think there's a 6% or 7% slope right through there?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Those are going to be, those are going to be higher than, than three feet.
Okay.
Just to get down there.
No, that's what I
Yeah, there's, there's another one. I don't, I don't want to not tell you one. There's one on the property line just off of that, that's potentially eight to 10 feet. And I don't, I've got to get that down somehow.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I know it's there, but somehow, that's got to go away.
One last question.
Alright.
I've done, I, I'm familiar with some Santa Barbara style
Mm-hmm.
architecture. Seldom do I see the stucco mold used for expansion joints on an authentic
Yes.
Santa Barbara style.
Yes. And I don't, I don't like doing it, but unless you've been sued before, okay, that's what you, one of the things you get sued for. So, yes, I don't like them, I try to control them as much as possible, but they're there by, I say self-protection?
Okay.
Okay. I, I could go on to tell you all about stucco and how it cracks and all that stuff, but until you have an attorney sitting across the table from you telling you the, "The stucco cracked, and there's a crack there," well, yes, there is, but it's not the waterproofing. The waterproofing's the paper underneath. Do you, so you control the, control the cracks. I wish I could get rid of them, but I can't. The texture on the Santa Barbara style is, is what's really important to make it work, because then, especially at the corners, you get it to feel very well, because it's a very soft, not a hard appearing look. So, we've gone through that quite a bit. We'll get it right.
Any other questions of the architect before we move on to public comments? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ursula Sack, please? Please provide your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Ursula Sack. I live at 2392 Vista Grande Terrace. And I thank you for allowing me to speak. I am representing Guahomi Alliance for Responsible Development, also known as GUAD, which is a neighborhood organization that is concerned about our semi-rural environment in the area just north of the Vista City limits. And with the idea that one picture is worth a thousand words, I brought some, just a few photos that I took that show East Vista Way. And I guess my point is pretty simple, East Vista Way cannot take any more traffic. The photo on the top there, if you'll, well, let's start with the photo on the, excuse me, on the lower left. That's looking toward Old Taylor Street from Warmlands. So, as you can see, it's solid cars. And then, the photo on the right is looking in the opposite direction, looking north toward Gopher Canyon. And as you can see, the solid row of cars continues. This was just a typical day, it was 5:30 PM. And, you know, nothing special, that's how it is at rush hour, every afternoon. So, the photo on the top is a close-up of looking toward Old Taylor Street, and where you see the, the power poles there, the, the tall ones there, that is the corner there of Old Taylor Street. So, as you can see, there is no movement in the traffic for quite a long distance. And another 90 units would just add an impossible amount of traffic. Also, across the street from this proposed project is the Sarah Homes that are now under construction, and that's 73 condominiums. This photo was taken four years ago, these photos were taken four years ago. And that was before that project came in. And of course, there's also very much development that's taken place to the west on the Melrose Apartments, near the Sprinter Station and all the buildings, excuse me, that's going on there. So, that is also going to be impacting East Vista Way. So, again, East Vista Way, as you can see, just cannot take any more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more speaker slips. So, we'll begin with Commissioner questions regarding site design. And can we start with you, Commissioner Jackal? Any questions, comments? Okay. Commissioner Rosler?
Yeah, my, my only concern with the, the site design and, and being an affordable project was trying to make sure that there was transit available to the folks living there. So, usually on southbound, East Vista Way, far side for the transit stop, if, if we can get North County Transit to put a, a bus stop there, I think that would be a help for, for the traffic being generated, so.
No comments from me. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Rosler, do you, do you know anything about the Vista Way, right-of-way? Is that, is that its ultimate right-of-way with now, with this property? Or is there a dedication there? No additional dedication?
What's shown on the drawing is what's required. I don't know if there's additional dedication that they're going to have to do, but I know what they're showing here on this site plan meets our circulation element standard.
Okay, and it meets the ultimate Okay, and it meets the ultimate Vista Way, whatever county has planned for Vista Way?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm concerned about these three driveway entrances off Old Taylor Drive and how they're, three driveways very close to each other. And of course, I understand why they're there, but because of the way the site's laid out, but it's feeling really cluttered with those three driveways to me. And I think two driveways would get the job done for getting in and out of the complex. And of course, that's a completely different site layout, I understand, but I'm just not crazy about having these three adjacent driveways to each other. What else on site design? Yeah, I questioned before the location of the pavilion, community room. And we have parking as a separate topic, so I can hold off on that. And that's it for this topic, I suppose.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Thank you. The first is that we've got a corner piece of property. And one of the guidelines of the city is that that corner be opened up. And we've got some units from building number one, really right up against the setback line. In this area right here, it would be nice to have that a little bit more open. I think it begins to create more of an invitation to come onto the property rather than abutting that building right up to the setback. There also appears to be a theme that's lacking. We've got, as was previously mentioned, three drives on Old Taylor, but they don't really lead to a central point or a central focal point within the complex. And I think that would really help anchor the development if there was a common area. Again, as previously mentioned, the pavilion, I think it's in the wrong place. I think that pavilion could be utilized more towards the center where people in unit number three or building number three really don't have to traverse the 30 vertical feet down to that common area. One other last item, two items, I'm sorry, is I think there does need to be further study on the grading, particularly with some of those retaining walls in the south. It's a tough lot. It is really a tough lot. Last item, minor, but I really don't get excited about having the trash enclosures right at the entrance to the drives. It would be nice if we could tuck those someplace off the street where they're more internal rather than visible from the street. Thank you.
Comments? Commissioner Garretson, please?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Garretson, we'll start with you with grading and topography.
No comments.
Commissioner Looney?
I have a couple of things, yes. So, thank you, Chairman. So Commissioner Looney brought up this area that he happened to notice, you know, there's a 14 or 15-foot grade difference here on this south property line. And I think as we get more and more used to this early design review process, we're going to want to see the details on something so significant as this. You know, a large wall, what kind of wall, what's cross-sections through the wall? We seem to be really liking to see some cross-sections. And if there's these steps in these buildings, these are not huge steps. So they're not doing that much for the architectural, I don't think. But the, a few cross-sections, I think, especially in a steep site where we're going to have some retaining walls, would really be needed for, to help us evaluate the site better.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on using the tuck-under parking to step the units down. You recall that further down on East Vista Way, we had the proposed project on Foothill and East Vista Way, and they were just going to grade a big pad. And we had slopes going on either side, coming down from the residential area and then down to Foothill and East Vista Way. This project takes that slope up inside the buildings. And so I like the design of it in that regard.
Commissioner Jackal? Commissioner Jackal, any comments or questions on architecture?
Okay, looking at the... Elevation, couldn't get the word. The sides of the buildings seem to need a little more detail. And for buildings three, five, and six, we just have long stretches of garage doors. Is there any way to break those up in some way so that it's just not this long stretch of garage doors? Maybe break up the building masses or something? The good news is I'm delighted that there are not flat roofs. That's very nice. Happy about that. And also the pervious asphalt.
Commissioner Rosler, architecture?
I think I'm fine with the architecture. I agree with Stephanie that the end of the buildings need to have a bit more treatment. Not much, but a bit more.
I'm very pleased with it. I thought it was very nicely done, especially for that site. Commissioner Carroll?
I do appreciate that the architect is stepping these buildings down and taking up the grade in the buildings and not proposing flat pads and mass, more of a mass, large-scale grading. But what I don't see in the steps or in the roof line is enough variation to, it looks very monotone, in my opinion, on the roof line and as Commissioner Jackal's mentioned, on the face, on the garage face building. So I don't know if that's broken up with larger steps. I'll just leave my comment at that.
Commissioner Fleming?
I, on the other hand, like the way it's laid out like that and the fact that the garage doors are on the backside so that they're not exposed to Vista Way. They're more behind. Also, the roof looks to be a lot of different heights and setbacks and things. It looks, if you look real close, you can see a lot more of them. But there's quite a few of them in there, so I've got no problem. I like the layout.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. I've got a couple of things dealing with the architecture. I'd like, if you could, please pull up sheet A-03. And I want to pay, I want to bring your attention to the north building number two, which is in the upper right corner of the drawing. Okay, then I'll direct it more to the commissioners. If you go to sheet A-03...
It's the lower one.
Okay, the lower right one. On that drawing, on the right edge, right here, there's shown shadow lines that are not indicated. Well, I don't think that's the north building. Anyway, I'd like you to go back to your sheets, 8.03. North building number two, it's in the upper right. And you'll see a series of, man, this is tough. There's four windows on the right edge. Those four windows are separated by a vertical dark line. That's a gutter, okay? And each of these building elevations are really one-wall elevation. They're not broken up into different planes. I'd like for you to go back to page A-02. And the three different floor plans, if I look at the wall, let's start with the ground floor where the garage is. Let's start here. So this wall line of the garages is in the same wall plane as this main level, and it's the same wall plane as the upper level. But when I look at that exterior elevation, it appears that there is an offset. But in reality, there is a three-story wall for that entire length of building wherever there is a subterranean garage. And the only break in that three-story element is where we have the common stair. So the drawing looks as though there's different wall planes, but in reality, it's not. And I have a concern with three-story walls being that tall and being that long where there's no offset. And I think for subsequent applications, I would like to see drawings that are a little bit more, maybe representative of the floor plan rather than...
Come on up, Mr. Chris. No, come on up.
The building where the long area is at the bottom actually has flipped for the number of units because that's only half a building.
Right.
Because the floor plans are there. So you have, in this case, one, the parking, the building's flipped, and that is an offset at two and a half feet, is there.
Yeah, on the other side, but not on the garage side.
Yeah, it is. Because again, the building's flipped, the unit.
Could I step down and...
We'll get it right. That step too heavy. Yeah, it does. Well, what happens is this is a common wall and it flips that way when it becomes four units. It looks the same on the other side, too. That way. That's how I get this little roof over the top of this because I had to cover it.
But this is not showing or isn't?
No, it's not. If I drew this, it would be huge because again, I guess, two floor plans, a floor plant type, not a building type. Why don't you ask me to draw it? Okay, yeah, I'm confident that it's there, so it's, that'd be a good thing to do. Yeah, that's a good thing to do, okay. Thank you for allowing me to talk to him.
Yeah.
Need to report back.
Who won?
What was it?
Who won?
No one won. It wasn't a competition, it's discussion. That's why we're here.
So what did you figure out for us?
He's going to clarify his drawing because what's on the drawing really isn't representative of what is shown on the exterior. So I see a conflict now between the floor plan and the exterior. And he's going to provide us on the next application clarity on that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Garretson, comments on architecture?
No comments.
Commissioner Garretson, landscape?
Yeah, I don't really see much here that indicates what the landscaping is, but I'd be concerned about landscaping to protect the neighbors who are at a lower elevation from headlights. So I'd be concerned about, you know, what that, what kind of landscaping we're going to provide to protect them.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, just one. The interior of the development is somewhat void of landscaping. There appears to be planter areas along the perimeter of the property line, but there's really no softscape shown or illustrated on the interior.
Commissioner Fleming?
Yeah, it doesn't, like you said, it doesn't show a whole lot of landscaping at all. Earlier, we had talked about some common area of the pavilion. If you could put something right in that, next to building number four, I think that area right there would be good if you could have some landscaping around that.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. Yeah, there's no plan, there's no preliminary landscape plan, is there? So I really don't know how to comment on the landscaping at this point.
Thank you. What I did like, Mr. Chris, was I liked that you were considering, when you do your landscape plan, to use colors that would reflect well off the buildings. I think that's very thoughtful. Commissioner Rosler?
Yeah, I'll be interested in looking at the landscaping plan when it comes in, so.
Commissioner Jackal?
Me, too.
Okay. Commissioner Jackal, parking and driveways?
Do we have ADA parking and visitor parking?
Based on the state requirement, the two parking spaces per unit is inclusive of guest parking as well as handicap-accessible parking.
That's the state requirement?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. That's state requirement?
That's correct.
Commissioner Rosler?
Commissioner Carroll commented earlier on the three driveways and I've been looking at that. And I think keeping the three driveways makes a lot of sense because you would cut down on circulation within the project, people coming and going. I would be concerned, though, about site distance out on Old Taylor Street. And I'd like to see site distance analysis when the project comes in.
My only comment regarding the parking is it's amazing that this project is similar in size to the one we just reviewed and yet it's got 25 more parking spaces, so very appreciative of that.
That's all my comments for that. Thank you. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So the project requires 225 spaces, doesn't it? The city requirements are saying that we need 225 spaces.
That's correct. That's 2.5 unit parking spaces per unit.
So we're short 39 spaces.
Correct. However, they've asked to have the project pursuant to state law, which requires two parking spaces per unit. So in fact, they meet the expectations of state law. However, based on our code standards, you're absolutely correct. Our code standards require 2.5 per unit.
Okay. So do I. What's staff's position on their request?
We can't take a position because it's a state requirement, it trumps our code.
Okay.
So if they provide a project that meets a density bonus allowance, and they provide the adequate number of affordable units per the state mandate, they can park their project at two spaces per unit, for a two-bedroom unit, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Okay, I didn't understand that. So that's, because they have an affordable housing component to the project, it triggers those other rules?
Yeah, they, they have, if they meet, there's a minimum percentage of affordable units that they have to provide in order to fall under the density bonus ordinance. That's the 5% of units that they're requesting. If they meet that requirement, and they provide 5%, very low-income units, they are exempted from our parking requirements and are allowed to follow the state's parking requirements that are in the government code.
Okay, I didn't pick up on that nuance there that that excludes them from meeting our requirements.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, yeah, I actually have the state standards right here. And yeah, upon the request of the developer, no city, county, or city or county shall require vehicular parking ratios inclusive of handicapped and guest parking of a development meeting the criteria of subdivision that exceeds the following ratios. And for two to three bedrooms, two parking spaces on site.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Fleming?
I, too, have no problem with the three driveways. As you said, it, I think it adds to a safety factor. It keeps too much circulation right at that, at the apex of it where it goes in there. So I, I don't have a problem with it. Again, I would like to see site plans to justify before it's over with.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, just one comment, and that's on the, the parking area that would be probably at the southwest area where there's a, basically a dead end area where there's no circulation. Go back, I think one slide. There we go. This area in here, it's great to have the additional parking, but there is a dead end, and there's no circulation of traffic. That may be an issue, it may not be. That's the only point that I have on the parking.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, the same thing is true on the other end. Because that's a, that's a dead end. The other thing is sidewalks within the pavilion, within the unit, that it appears that everybody's gonna be walking on the driveway. So that would be a safety concern that I would have, but. That's it.
Excuse me, I'd like to just, for myself, step back one space to do with the parking and the driveways. And that the trash, there's, it appears to be four trash enclosures. Could be three. And they're all along the Old Taylor Street. And so I think Commissioner Rossler or Commissioner Fleming commented, care about that. But I don't see any trash enclosures towards the Vista Way. So if you're in that building by Vista Way, you got a long ways to carry your trash. So I would just suggest, you know, maybe balancing them more within the, the complex. Commissioner Garrettson, lighting? Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Fleming?
You had mentioned earlier, when we're talking about the Santa Barbara look of it, so much white, that you were gonna be using some, some lightings to reflect upon the buildings. Is that what, is, am I correct there? Because I think that, or, you know, anyway, to, to add color to the, to the white. And I think that would help out a lot. So I'm looking forward to see what you do with that.
Commissioner Carroll?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Rossler? Commissioner Jackal, okay. Commissioner Jackal, safety? Okay. Commissioner Rossler? Commissioner Carroll?
No comments.
Commissioner Fleming?
None.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Garrettson? Project amenities, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I kinda like the, the two amenities that, that are here for the parks, but I wonder about people getting to them, sidewalks and stairs, and, you know, just how convenient that's gonna be.
Commissioner Looney?
A couple of points. I think for those recreational areas or the park areas, putting it on Vista Way seems to be inappropriate. I think it should be brought into the interior portion of the property. That's where the greatest amount of noise is generated. And I think the project is short on amenities. There's really no place to go. And I think the Pavilion Community Room is a great idea. I think it should be expanded. There's no pool, there's no barbecue areas that are at least indicated on this site plan. And I think a project of this size should have some of the amenities, particularly if the rents are gonna be at that upper end, as noted by the applicant.
Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. I agree, it's lacking in what we would consider to be amenities. It has, it has park space, but I think what we've been striving for when we get into this number of units is to have two, two to three unique types of amenity. And these is really, this is just two separate of the same, in my opinion. And it's not, it's not another, it's not a unique amenity. It's, it's one.
Yes, if the project amenities don't meet our design standards. Commissioner Rossler?
Yeah, on, on that, that issue, if we are gonna have children living here, I would like to see amenities that are designed and focused towards them also.
Yeah, I see the area for bikes, but I guess that's just to store them. Commissioner Jackal, please.
I agree, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Jackal, traffic and pedestrian walkways?
Um, I just want to be sure there are walkways.
Okay. Commissioner Rossler?
Getting these street improvements will be such a boon to this neighborhood. I can't express how, how excited I am that this property is actually gonna develop. Concerning the traffic on East Vista Way, that is a result of our industrial parks on the south side and people living in southwestern Riverside. And so that traffic has been getting, this, this project will not have any impacts on that traffic. If you recall, two years ago, when we were looking at the CIP budget, I asked for East Vista Way to start being considered in that process. We have the annexation of the Strawberry Hill area that's supposed to, to do those improvements. In this area, East Vista Way is one lane in both directions. And if we can get it to two lanes, I think that long line of traffic will go down somewhat. But I think the ultimate solution is for Melrose to be put through to 76 in the city of Oceanside, and provide another northwest, north-south corridor. So I think there, there are larger issues on East Vista Way than this project can solve, but it can do its part by widening the street and providing two lanes on, on East Vista Way for, for the city. So that's, that's my comments on traffic.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. So I'm not really clear on what the road improvements are going to be for this project. I know that's really not a design review, but.
They have to meet our four-lane standard, so they're required to do half-street. So they would do the two lanes on their side, sidewalk curb and gutter. And they would be required to repave 12 feet on the opposite side of the center line. That would be the extent of their improvements on East Vista Way.
And Old Taylor Street?
Old Taylor is a local road, so it would just be a 30 on, right, now 40 on 60, I believe. So 40-foot paved within a 60-foot right-of-way. So they'd be responsible for half that, 20 feet, plus the sidewalk curb and gutter along their frontage.
Okay. So I think there is gonna be more than five-foot dedication on Old Taylor than if you're going to 60, but.
I believe there is some additional dedication, but we'll recheck it. I know there was some discussion of that right after the pre-application, so I'll talk to the engineering folks about it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Fleming?
Nothing else.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, a couple of things. I think it would, as brought up earlier, knowing where that bus stop is, I think would be beneficial, especially on Vista Way. And then regarding traffic, the photos that were shown were of northbound traffic during the afternoon commute. I see this is coming before that. So I really don't see where this development is gonna have a negative impact on northbound traffic during afternoon commute. I think this would be the destination. Plus, there's a couple of ways out. Typically, if someone's gonna live in this region or this area of Vista, they're gonna go towards town rather than going out of town. So I don't have an issue with, with traffic.
Commissioner Garrettson?
My only concern is internal traffic. People walking from, you know, the Vista Way unit all the way down to the community room. You know, that circulation, how safe is that going to be? Are they gonna be walking just on the driveway? Are there gonna be walkways, stairs, et cetera?
McKenna or Carla, do you, either one of you have any comments that you'd like to go on record? No? Okay. Mr. Ressler, did you get everything that you needed from us? Did you get everything, Mr. Chris, that you needed from us? Very good, okay. Thank you. Hungry. Who's this, this one? Oh, Mr. Conley again.
Are we ready? Okay. Last project tonight. Uh, this is Civic Center Senior Affordable Apartments. A request for a site development plan for 81 senior apartment units on a two-acre site located at 815 Civic Center Drive. This is northwest of the intersection of Civic Center and South Santa Fe. Uh, there's an existing 30-unit motel on the site that's been converted to apartments. It would be demolished if this project moves forward. This is the project site, shown on the overhead. Across the street from the Von Center, south of it is the Union Bank and Walgreens. To the west are single-family neighborhoods off of Ocean View. And to the north is a daycare and office space. Some photos of the site. Uh, the site on the left, photo on the left is taken from the street elevation looking into the site, as well as the upper right-hand corner. And the lower right-hand corner is a view of the site from the Walgreens parking lot south of the property. It's been fully developed as a motel since before the city was incorporated. The general plan land use designation is mixed use. Again, allows 40 units to the acre. The downtown specific plan is the south gateway planning area. That is actually a mixed-use 30 designation, so maximum density is 30 units to the acre. This was recently changed when we updated the specific plan in September. Uh, so three-story maximum with a maximum density of 30 to the acre. The project proposes 81 units. That would be 66 one-bedroom and 15 two-bedroom units, and proposes 81 parking spaces. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the city's normal parking requirements for a senior affordable project. There are numerous studies, which will be provided at the time the project moves forward, to show that the parking requirements for senior affordable are much lower than a normal family project would generate. The architectural elevations rely on a craftsman design. Uh, the architect from the Dolan Group that designed this project also provided some other architectural elevations for your review, which I provided to you on the dais tonight. The craftsman style proposes a use of wood and stucco materials with pitched roofs along the top elevation and balconies and details at this, at the project entry. Uh, there's some different views of it that are in the packet, which I'll go through here. This is from the street elevation looking northwest at the site. And some details related to the layout, as seen from the adjacent single-family neighborhood. There were some real concerns about blocking the views or being visible from the single-family homes behind it. So they included some artist renderings to address those views. Again, there are no general planner zoning changes requested as part of this project. It is a density bonus request, similar to the last project. This project would be 100% affordable, so the density bonus is automatic. The increase in density from 30 to 40 units to the acre is based on the fact that it's a fully affordable project. So they are asking for an increase in density based on what the current general plan allows. However, they are staying within the height limitation of, of the current specific plan. And again, they're asking for reduced parking, as I mentioned, from 117 spaces, which would be normally required under the downtown specific plan, to 81 or one space per unit. The south gateway downtown specific plan planning area allows a density of up to 30 to the acre. They're asking for an increase above that. Again, parking is being requested to be reduced, and a building height of three stories or 45 feet, which they are staying within. I'm not gonna go through all the issues with respect to the design guidelines. We've already been through that tonight. Uh, the planning commission is asked to provide some comments on the project, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff before we hear from the applicant? Commissioner Garrettson?
Is this driveway the same place or is it different than the present driveway?
Uh, the driveway on the south side is slightly shifted south from where the current driveway location is. It's a little bit farther north on the actual site, and the, the northerly driveway would be a new driveway. There's no driveway on the north side of the property right now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Conley, um, there's an elevator on this project, is that correct?
I believe there is an elevator on this project.
Near the community space?
There's two. The architect's probably gonna come up and address the architectural issues, but yes, there's two.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, we're ready for the applicant?
Hi, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Uh, my name's Rebecca Louie. I'm with Wakeland Housing and Development Corporation. We're the applicant for this project. Um, Wakeland is a nonprofit affordable housing developer. We've been around since around 1998. Since then, we've created 6,500 affordable homes in about 40 different developments. Uh, we've got a lot of range. We're doing stuff ranging from a 205-unit high-rise downtown to much smaller projects for seniors and veterans, and kind of all through the county, San Diego, Chilla Vista. We're working Riverside on a veterans' project right now. So we're really excited to have this project before you tonight. We're in the very early stages of development, so this is a great opportunity to get ahead of you. So a lot of things, I think, you know, it's great to be able to get your input right now. We haven't had any community meetings yet. I heard that discussion taking place in earlier ones. We thought it'd be good to have the project a little more baked with your input before we then go reach out to the neighborhood, which would be our next step. So the Grove will provide 81 affordable homes for seniors age 62 and over. Residents will earn about between $70- Residents will earn about between $17,000 to $40,000 a year, depending where they are on the AMI scale. And rents will range from about $450 to $1,100, depending on their income. Residents will have access to onsite amenities and programs designed for active, healthy, kind of engaged lifestyles, including onsite exercise programs, healthy cooking classes, social events. We really do our senior housing with the goal of keeping people living independently, engaged in the community, and having a good sense of community within the project. We really believe The Grove is the right project to redevelop this site. As was mentioned, the existing project has been there quite a while, so we know something's probably going to go in, and we think that affordable senior is a really good choice. For one, it meets a great need. Senior population's the fastest-growing demographic, and the more people age, the more they need safe, affordable housing. When you're on a fixed income, it becomes really critical. It's a great location for senior housing. Residents are within an easy walk of restaurants, a grocery store, a pharmacy. They're about half a mile from the Sprinter station and less than a quarter mile to a bus stop. So it really allows people to live kind of a car-free lifestyle. On that, it really directly responds to the concerns we've been hearing all night about traffic and parking and multifamily. You don't really see that with affordable senior housing. Car ownership tends to be much lower. Trips generated tend to be minimal and at different times than, you know, sort of the school drop-off or getting to work at the eight-to-five hours. And affordable senior housing has lower turnover rates. The seniors don't move around as much as when you're a younger family, so I think a lot of that question about being invested in the community. And then finally, I just want to point out that Wakeland, as a developer, we're in our projects for the long haul. Someone used the terms that the developer just wanted to build, dump and leave. That's really the antithesis of who we are. We're in our projects for the long term. We try to build with really sustainable materials. All affordable housing by nature is very green from what's required of it. It's usually LEED-certified, Greenpoint-rated, above the Title 22 requirements. It's required of it, and it also just makes it last longer. We're really hands-on managers, and we really get invested in the communities that we're in. So with that, I will turn it over to our architect. Jack Gallagher from the Dolan Group.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, my name is Jack Gallagher, senior architect with Dolan Group, and I'm the managing director of our Solana Beach office. And I also have here Sean Whittaker, the designer of this project, and another architect in our office. Very excited to be part of this team, associated with this project, which I think is a great example or can be a great example of responsible development so close to the Sprinter station and satisfying a great need for senior affordable living. And I just want to reiterate, you know, this whole idea of the early design review, I think is a fantastic idea from an architectural standpoint to get feedback as early as possible. There's a little bit of a, you know, catch-22 or balance in the sense of what we would present in our first review. I think you've seen, you see in the packets that you have in front of you that we were not as far along as some of the others. That was kind of intentional to start. I think if we showed more detail, you'd obviously have more comments. But by the same token, we don't want to race too far ahead before we get a very good feeling about your design direction and just generally how you feel about the project. So just want to reiterate how open we are to hearing your comments and putting them to our design. Do we have a pointer, John? So just start, just go to a little bit more detail to build on what John presented. In terms of the site plan, we basically have a U-shaped building. This is Civic Center Drive. We have 81 parking spaces, and I can answer to any questions about the parking because we do have background information to defend that number of spaces for senior affordable. And then what we're showing here in terms of outdoor amenity spaces in the middle of the U-shaped building, we say lawn, that's probably not really where it'll go. It'll be drought tolerant, but it's just basically showing open space and potential for stormwater retainage and water treatment and so forth for this site. But we're showing an outdoor gathering space right off the community room, potential bocce ball court. We've done several of these senior facilities, and typically we might have a community garden, a bocce ball court, outdoor gathering and barbecue space and so forth. Here in the southeast corner, we have our entry lobby, which would be a two-story space, and it would be the anchor to the project most likely. We like to have at least one strong accent feature that kind of anchors the building and so forth. And then we have the community space behind it. As Rebecca mentioned, it would be a multipurpose space that could be used for community events, perhaps exercise classes or cooking classes. This is the exterior, just kind of a first pass to get your sense of, you know, the design direction, whether this is favorable or whether you want us to go in a different direction. I wouldn't have characterized this as craftsman. What we are trying to do, I think Sean is going to great efforts to try to avoid being kind of a period-style architecture to start, although, again, you know, Dolan Group, we've done award-winning architecture in every conceivable style, and we're not married to any particular style. We look forward to your direction. I've heard a lot of Santa Barbara, we could go that route if you want. But this was trying to be, this is more about the massing to start and making sure we have very strong shadow lines. Very strong shadow lines and variation vertically and horizontally. Variation in the roofs. We have a combination of flat roofs for mechanical equipment that would be screened with parapets, and also pitched roofs, but we have deep shadows with the balconies. And we would use, we're showing some contemporary materials, but in, you know, some traditional form. So this would be, for example, like an accent material, composite wood cladding for some of the accents, and then perhaps fiber cement siding, variation of earth-toned colors, metal railings, stucco and so forth. We'd have storefront, plenty of storefront glazing at this corner, entry lobby, and then vinyl windows and concrete roof tile. But this is our first pass, and we look forward to your comments and opinions. And as John pointed out, this is just showing a view from the neighborhood, and I don't think this does justice to the landscape screening that's already there that we would preserve and build upon. And then what we're doing is every corner of this building drops from three to two stories. It'd be this corner, the southeast corner, and this corner, so that we're going from two up to three stories. And again, this is more or less a glorified massing model. We have not yet gone into great detail at this point, but, again, all of our, when we're finished, this building will be indistinguishable from market-rate housing. Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I don't know where this fits in there, but you have two driveways here. And the one closest to Santa Fe is really close to Santa Fe. And if you want to take a right out of there and turn left on Santa Fe, I would think it would be very difficult to get over to that left lane in order to turn left on Santa Fe. In other words, if you come out of that driveway and you want to go left on Santa Fe, I would think it'd be very difficult to get out there.
You have the bank in between that, though.
Yeah, but you have to get in that left lane. If you look at the, look at the drawing there, it shows that driveway right where that left lane starts. So I don't know if that's going to be, you know, possible.
The staff didn't have any concerns about that because you could go out the northerly driveway as well and get to the...
Circle up that way and turn right and then get over?
You got it.
Good point. Thank you.
Commissioner Ressler?
I'm sorry, the young lady that introduced the project, I've forgotten your name already. I have, could I, I have a couple of questions for you. Your project does not have a kitchen nor a dining room, so all your tenants are going to prepare their own food, is that correct?
Yeah, we do a community kitchen. In the community space, there's usually a kitchen, but it's not really for meal service, per se. You know, we do healthy cooking classes, we do community events where, you know, maybe a potluck thing, and we use it for reheating the food, but we don't just do meal service.
This is active living. Do you provide any services for assisted living or are you participating in those programs?
So we don't see this as assisted living, but what we will do is we'll start reaching out to community partners to find out. You know, we sort of first see who's moving in, what their demographics are, what their needs are. And then once we've assessed the needs, so if, you know, if we get a lot of, you know, healthy, young 62-year-olds, that might not be as much of an issue if we end up with a, you know, an older crowd that needs a little more. That's when we really reach out to services that already exist in the community. We have a lot of partnerships, so we're doing one in the Talmadge area where we're partnering with St. Paul's Pace Program, and they're actually coming to get our residents, take them to their facility during the day, provide them with medical, meals and all that. But that's a higher-need community, so I think that's all kind of to be determined.
All right, okay, very good.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
I have a question for the architect.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sorry.
On the floor plans, the one-bedroom unit, the bathroom is to the right of the door as you enter in and is separated by a storage area from the bedroom. I was just curious why you laid it out that way. 62-year-old guys need direct access to bathrooms, I would think, but I, just a concern.
Oh, no, these are good insights, and we'll take another look at that.
Okay, all right, very good. And then on the ground floor, especially the units that are facing Civic Center Drive, they have a patio. I would think that you would want to enclose that in some manner. You know, small rail fence, wall.
Absolutely. You know, I always like to see a gradation from public to semi-public, to semi-private to private, and to have a nice, for territoriality, have your nice little private space that's defined.
That's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please.
A couple of questions for, again, the architect. Thank you. First of all, it's great to see a piece of property in Vista that has existed the way that it has for decades to be improved. That's, it's great to see. I also appreciate the clarity of your design package. You've presented a concept that's understandable, and it's nice to see that work. Couple of questions. Could you explain the reasoning for the long corridors that you've got within the plan? One's about 175 feet, the other is just under 200 feet in length. Could you enlighten me on that?
Simply for efficiency's sake, really. We have one elevator bank centrally located, and then we have the exit stairs at each end. And so it's kind of a, it's a fairly common pattern for apartment buildings just in terms of keeping construction costs down.
Okay. Also, there appears to be a laundry room or laundromat per floor rather than having a stackable unit within each living unit. What has been your experience in similar developments? Because I would think that as we get up in age, do we really want to sit in a laundromat? Or do we want to have someone take the clothes that we left in the washer or dryer? Just, could you, you know, what's been your experience on that kind of layout and that kind of design?
Our experience has been the community laundry rooms, and ideally for seniors on every floor, even if it's a smaller room on every floor. We're just presented to the Carlsbad Planning Commission very similar senior affordable in Robertson Ranch. And I think it's an opportunity for interaction, but I see, I can see it both ways. I mean, we can talk about that with a developer, because there is always the fallback for providing them in the units. But I will say, in the multiple senior affordable projects that we've designed, the standard has been a common laundry facility.
Okay. One last question. Civic Center is a very busy street, and you've got the majority, well, maybe 50% of the living units facing that street. Was there any consideration of taking your building concept and flipping it or rotating it maybe 90 degrees where you didn't have the number of units facing that busy street to where you have a better blend from that busy street into maybe a portion of that courtyard or that plaza and getting more of the residential units up against the other residential properties that are along the, I guess would be the northwest corner?
Well, let me first say, at this point, we don't want to rule anything out. We want to take every comment that we hear to heart, so we'll look at that. I would say the first intuition was to, first of all, we were looking, trying to look with great respect towards the residential and try to open it up and soften that edge, so they would not be looking at all building. And so we stepped down the building, we opened the U up to that area. And at the same time, I guess the first intuition was that, you know, in a more urban location, it's better street presence, you know, to have units with balconies and patios. You know, a lot of planners like to see stoops at street level, especially in an urban location. So just a couple of comments, but we could look at that maybe internally and look at it both ways.
I think one of the key comments that you made in your presentation was the massing of the building. You've done a good job. I like the variation of the roofs and the adjustments of the roof pitches, that facade that can encompass the balconies. If you can maintain that facade with those balconies, I think it'll soften and lessen the effect of nearly a 200-foot-long building that faces the street. That's, I think, going to be the challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson, please.
Quick question. Your elevators are both next to each other, centrally located. If I'm a resident here, I'm getting on an age and I have a wheelchair, and my unit is there, and my parking is there. I have to come all the way around up to the elevator and all the way back. Is that problematic?
I suppose it would be something that might be considered in terms of locating, you know, in terms of management locating in particular apartment units. Those that are, you know, disabled or need a wheelchair might be, get preference closer to the elevator.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I share the concern about the, well, first, let me start off and say I really like the general concept of what you have proposed. And I like it for the neighborhood, and I like it that it's, the apartments will be located within walking distance of the grocery store, the drugstore, that sort of thing. I think that's great. However, I share the concern about the hallways. Being a senior citizen myself, if I'm looking, you have one laundry room per floor, one trash place per floor. If I live clear on the west end, that's a long way to schlepp around to do my laundry, and I have to sit there or keep walking back and forth while it goes through its thing. I really wish you'd think about the stackable washer dryer for the apartments. And by the same token, if I drive someplace and get something and park, I enter, no matter, as Commissioner Garrettson has said, the lobby, and then I have to go to my apartment down these long hallways. said, the lobby, and then I have to find, go to my apartment down these long hallways. And if I'm coming from the grocery store with my arms full of groceries, again, I've got to schlepp all the way down through those hallways. So, that would be hard for me personally to do. And I wondered, would it be possible to have the elevators kind of split up so that you don't have to walk so far to get to the elevators?
We'll certainly discuss that internally. I suppose we always start with the standard and locating, you know, consolidating the elevators, using one elevator equipment room and so forth. We can, we can take a look at that.
All right, thank you so much.
Commissioner Fleming?
Yes, I agree. I was just thinking about that, the elevators on the end of these wings, if you could find a location for the entrance and an elevator there. I think that would help to mitigate the, the long, excuse me, that would help to mitigate the long hallways. I do like the idea of rotating this to more of what it was as it sits there now. You know, as you sit there now, the motel has got the opening onto Civic Center, and the housing is back behind it. So, I would like to see something along that same line. I think that would be much more attractive. It would expose, I just think that would be the better way to go at it. And I do really, really, really like the idea of the stack washer and dryers in the, in the units.
Thank you. I would like for you to consider putting a second trash location on each floor, and maybe it's right close to the elevator, because if you're going to walk to go out, you can take your trash out at the same time. And then, question, am I reading the drawing correctly that the Unit A's patios are off the bedroom and not off the living room?
That wasn't included.
Yeah, balconies are off the bedroom, right? Sheet A2.
It looks like, like we have the balconies in some of the units off of the bedrooms, yes.
I don't, I was wondering if that's the norm. I always thought the balconies were off the, the living room, but, so it's just a question. And then, my other question, I think that's it for now. That's it for now, till we go through it. All right, any more questions? Let's see. I have no speaker slips for this item. So, we'll get up a little punch list. Commissioner Garrettson, did you want to start on site design?
Yeah, I appreciate what you've done to try to keep the landscape where the private homes are behind there. I drove up there in that little cul-de-sac that we can see, and the trees are basically blocking that. So, I appreciate you doing that. What, where are the two-bedroom units? Which, which print?
They would be the B units. So, that would be on...
A2 has one, a couple of them.
Yeah, there's just 15. There's 66 one-bedrooms. Those are all the Unit As, and the Unit Bs are the twos.
And then, the Unit C is just a larger version, or does the Unit C actually have what appears to be like a dander, or?
It's just a variation of, you know.
It seems, I just made a quick note here, but I don't know, I didn't reference it, that in one of the two-bedroom units, you have to go through the, there's the master bedroom with the bath, and then you have to go through the other bedroom from the living room to get to the bathroom. I'm not sure of that, but, but you, you can access all the bathrooms, well, this...
Do you have, are you looking at sheet A5?
A5. Yeah, it does appear you can get in there without going through the bedroom. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please, on site design.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think it would, I think it'd be worth just considering rotating the whole building complex rather than having those living units on Civic Center. Maybe begin to soften that street edge a little bit. Not that you'd completely open it. I think that would be a misuse of space, but to get that balance of living spaces open, living spaces up against the residential and a little bit more open to the Civic Center.
It's certainly a possibility.
There's some huge eucalyptus trees there, especially the butts, the bank property. I don't know if you're trying to save those, but the age of those things and the winds that we had recently, I have no problem with those being omitted. Again, coming back into the site design, because that may dictate what you do or don't do with the building location. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming on architecture? Commissioner Carroll on, excuse me, site design?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll have to say that my initial thought when I saw this, this U shape, was that I liked it because it had the outdoor usable space for the community is sound sheltered by the building, and I would be worried that if, if it was rotated to the point where you would get more noise from the street, that it, that it would not be as enjoyable of a hangout. And I also do like, you know, Civic Center, this is, this is very urban area, and it doesn't bother me to have the, the building up close to the setback of the street. I'm, I'm more thankful to get the buffer of the parking and landscaping from the residential. That's my opinion on, on the, on the sighting of it.
I like the idea of flipping it on the site, because then it, you don't have the bedrooms on the street, the bedrooms and the living space on the street. Commissioner Rossler, please.
The only reason I laugh is because I agree with Commissioner Carroll that I like the building wall on the street. So, you're, you're getting, you're getting direction from, from two, two different ways. One of the things I am concerned about, and it, it goes to your, to your site design, is the services that you're going to offer your residents. You know, if you, if you provide laundry service, are you going to provide maid service, somebody going to get, come in and help them change the bed once a week? You know, are you going to do that? Are you going to check on your residents daily? You know, so, I'm going to be interested, when you submit your application, I'm going to be interested in your program, and tell me about the services that you're going to, you're going to provide. Because if you're, if you're not going to provide the service, then having the individual laundry in, in the unit would be, I could see that being beneficial. But if you're going to have maid service once a week, and they're going to change the sheets, then, then yeah, you can have the central laundry. So, that's, that's my point.
Commissioner Jackal on the site design?
Well, I'm, I'm joining the, 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 likes the plan as it is with the building edge on the street.
I've always been odd. Okay. Commissioner Jackal, grading and topography? Not sure that there's much to see. There's nothing to see, okay. We'll move to architecture then. We'll start at Commissioner Jackal.
I, I wish, well, since you provided us with, with a number of other choices, this one, which is the Magnolia Courts, seems to have much more detail, less blank walls. I really would like something more along those lines.
Commissioner Rossler?
I, on the other hand, am okay with the architectural design. I like the, the large eve overhangs of the roof and the varied roof. One comment on the rear elevation, the perspective that you gave us showing it, the building from the residential neighborhood, I would like to see, and I appreciate going down to two stories, that's a good idea. I would like to see the same architectural detail on the front of the building as on the back of the building also. Okay? So, that's my comment.
I like the architectural style. I think it's, it's very lovely. I think it's great for this piece of property in town. I think it's just a terrific use of this property. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you. I, I just also like these large eve overhangs of this submitted design. And some, these other ones, there's some great options here as well. I'm not so used to seeing this middle, say, here's a bunch of options, pick what you want. But that's very nice of you to, to have this, have these to look at, but I think it's fine.
Commissioner Fleming?
I'm going to come down on the side that it's, what you submitted originally is really, really nice. I like that. I like, I don't know what it's called, but it's the coloring and the balconies and the uneven roofing. It's just, I like it a lot.
Commissioner Looney?
A couple of things. I think the architecture, you've created some interest, you've created some variety, and I think you've done a great job in the massing. It's tough when you're dealing with that structure that tall. I do have a concern about the long corridors. I used to work in a care facility, and when I see something that long, I always go back to that time, and for me, it wasn't pleasant. And if this is an apartment complex for the elderly, I wouldn't want to be in a care facility quite yet, because that's what the long corridors remind me of. I think having laundry in the, at least in some of the units is important. And then, it's taken me decades to be able to acquire a vehicle that I've always liked, and I don't see any covered parking. So, I don't know if that's a requirement, but some of us older guys like to have our cars covered. Again, that's a personal bias. Those are, those are my comments.
Commissioner Garrettson, please.
I like the design. I think it fits with the neighborhood. If you drive up where the cul-de-sac is behind there, those houses tend to blend into this color scheme pretty good, I think, from my memory. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Garrettson on landscape?
Yeah, not a lot of detail here, but I appreciate the fact that the houses behind, even though there are a lot of trees, it looks like you're going to add some more. And I appreciate that, plus down by the pharmacy. You know, that's pretty open now. It's just a chain-linked fence, so adding some landscaping there, I think, would give it a more secluded feel for that area, as opposed to the big parking lot with the pharmacy.
Commissioner Looney?
On the street units, again, if those patios are going to be budding up against that street, I'd like to see some dense landscaping to create some privacy, especially if those patios are going to be off the bedrooms. At night, when the lights are on inside the living units, there's just a window right into the most private part of the home. So, you're going to want to, I think, pay particular attention to how that edge of the sidewalk is landscaped to screen the living units.
Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Carroll, landscape?
No comments.
Commissioner Rossler?
Yeah, I, I, on the landscaping plan, I'm going to be interested in seeing the amenities, and maybe we wait till amenities, but the landscaping relating to the activity of, of the residents that are going to live there. You know, I like the idea of the bocce ball court. There's a water feature here. I'm not sure if it's a spa or, or just a fountain, but that's what I'm going to be interested in seeing on the landscaping plan.
Commissioner Jackal?
I'm going to be very interested in seeing the landscaping plan.
Okay. Commissioner Jackal, parking and driveways?
Only, I was struck by the fact of no garages as well.
Okay. Commissioner Rossler?
Yeah, all the senior apartments that I'm aware of do not have any type of covered parking. It's all open. Some of the spaces are reserved for residents, maybe even numbered or lettered or reserved. So, this isn't unusual, but I do like the idea of having some covered parking, so.
My only comment with parking, and you know your clientele, is six accessible parking spaces enough for a senior complex? Commissioner Carroll?
No comments.
Commissioner Fleming?
I do like the idea of the, some sort of a covered parking for, for these, the special cars.
Commissioner Looney?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson?
No comment.
Commissioner Garrettson on lighting?
No comment.
Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Carroll?
I'd like to see a lot, especially around the parking with seniors. Commissioner Rossler?
Exactly. That's going to be important, to have the pedestrian way lit, and yet, we know from experience, being adjacent to single-family homes, that lighting reflecting off site's going to be a concern. So, balancing those two is going to be, going to be a challenge.
Commissioner Jackal? Commissioner Jackal on safety? Commissioner Rossler?
I would like for you, if possible, to consider a crosswalk that goes from the project over to the Vons Shopping Center, something similar to what's on Carlsbad Boulevard, where a person presses the button, the sidewalk lights up, because, you know, I watch the news, and too many seniors are crossing these streets because they don't want to go to the corner.
I can appreciate that comment, but I can tell you right now, that's not going to happen.
Darn!
Sorry. Mid-block crossing's severely dangerous, especially on streets with this high speed and this volume of traffic. They have to go to the light, or we could put a light in at Sierra Verde, that's the other option.
That's the one just, just up the street a bit, right? Okay. Commissioner Carroll?
No comments.
Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner... Commissioner Garrettson, project amenities. Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Fleming.
I don't know if it's considered amenities, but I think, I would like to see you look into offering laundry service, at least where you, you could collect it and give it to a dry cleaner or something. Maybe not the full service, but I'd like to see that amenity. And, and then again, the landscaping and stuff outside.
Commissioner Carroll.
What's, what I've seen here so far, and what was talked about in the presentation, seems fine to me.
I'm assuming there's going to be a property manager? Commissioner Rossler. Commissioner Jackal.
Well, I'm gathering that we don't need to worry about tot lots for this. But I really do like the, the plans you have for the community space. I like that very much.
Commissioner Jackal on traffic and pedestrian walkways.
Well, actually, are there sidewalks along the parking? Or does, do people have to walk in the park, in the driveway parking thing?
Yeah, there'll be sidewalks along the interior portion of the parking lot, adjacent to the building.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all right.
What about on the, on the, what is now the backside? Is there a sidewalk there?
No. Sidewalks run along the street frontage and around the building. That would be the extent of pedestrian walkways.
It does go around the building on that, that backside?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Russler. Commissioner Carroll.
No comments.
Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Garrettson.
No comments.
Student commissioners? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Connolly, did you get everything? Rebecca, are you good, or? All right. Done with that one? Okay. Thank you very, very much. Commission staff discussion, council action, and reports.
This is our last meeting for the year, so congratulations. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Our next meeting will be January 5th. I believe we have one design review for the creekside paths next to Frazier Farms there.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Gill's other project in town. I don't have anything else to report.
Mr. Stone? Nothing? Commissioner Jackal.
Yes, I've been waiting with great impatience to ask about, remember when we approved the Avalon Apartments? And we were concerned about parking spilling out, and they said, yes, they would have a parking management plan.
They do have a parking management plan. They have a sticker program that all the residents are required to have stickers on their car that defines whether or not they have a garage space or an open space. And so if they have a garage sticker and they're parking in their garage, they get towed. If they have an open sticker, they have to park in an open space. If they have too many vehicles, that, then what they're assigned parking is, and they either provide, they either find open parking on the site, or they park off-site. But that's an inevitable consequence of multifamily development. You can manage it only to the point of what parking you have on your site. And if you have residents that have more cars than that, they find parking elsewhere. So, it's one of the issues we will deal with in our parking update. When we come and talk to you about that, we're going to do that in the second meeting in January on the 19th. But they do have a parking management plan. They manage it as best they can, and it meets, you know, the standards of what you see in the industry. We've all reviewed it, and our engineering group has reviewed it. And, you know, they met the, the condition that was imposed on them at approval.
But are we sure that they're not using their garages for, for storage rather than parking?
Every resident that has a garage assigned to them is required to put a sticker on their car for that garage space. So they either are parking in their garage, or they're not parking on the property. But according to the manager that I spoke to about that issue, because it's come up a couple of times now, they are verifying that all the residents that are assigned garage parking are in fact parking in their garages.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fleming.
Easy for you to say. Now, John, I, we've got to do something about that. This puts us in a very bad situation, where we're trying to make guidelines and decisions, and we can't say no, you know, and that makes it a little tough.
So the mixed-use zone standards are lighter on parking than what the citywide standards are. I know that. The citywide standards are extremely high compared to every jurisdiction around us. That's okay, if that's the preference of the commission. But we should be aware, if we're requiring parking that exceeds every jurisdiction around us, we may not get the type of development that we're looking for. I understand with multifamily, that may not be the most desirable use, considering what's happening in the city. But we are going to look at that issue as part of our parking update, and we will have the opportunity to change the mixed-use standards or look at our citywide standards. We're going to review them all. Well, I have, I have to say, I somewhat agree with Mr. Gill's comment tonight, that it's largely a management problem, and not as much a site planning problem. And if you look at projects that are well-managed, you rarely see the kind of parking impacts that you see out on Breeze Hill. And there's not a whole lot you can do about that. But we will certainly address the situation when we come before you in late January.
Mr. Connolly, is part of the parking issues on La Tortuga related to the jail? And the parking of jail person, not inmates?
It's pretty much impossible to tell who's parking there unless you put someone out there 24/7. But what we gather is that the majority of the parking on the street out there is from the condominiums and the apartments that are out there. During the daytime, you do have a number of county employees that do park up and down La Tortuga, but most of the stuff on Breeze Hill and further back in the neighborhoods, we feel is from the multifamily development that's out there. The Charlemont condominiums did institute a parking management program and sticker program as well when the Avalon project was being developed, so they're working on trying to reduce that problem. But I'm sure there's a number of owners in there that use their garage for storage and, you know, don't park their cars in them either, so, again, a management issue. Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a problem. And that is a reoccurring problem in older developments throughout the city that are not managed well. And not a whole lot we can do to affect that.
Commissioner Carroll.
So, Mr. Connolly, we saw a second early design review of a project tonight. Is that second review at the sole discretion of the applicant? Or is it a recommendation from staff, or how does that trigger?
That's being driven by the staff. So, we're making those decisions on projects where we feel like there were a significant amount of comments provided, and we want to make sure that the revisions are meeting the expectations of the commission. On projects where we don't get a lot of comments, like this last one, for example, I don't anticipate bringing it back to the commission unless there are a lot of real, significant changes needed. However, it's at the commission's discretion. So if you do have a design review project in front of you, and you feel like there's, you'd like to see it again before it moves forward for a public hearing, you feel free to please let us know that in your commentary.
Yeah, the, the applicant's other choice is to just roll the dice on his actual submittal, and he could, he could just hit more of a wall in public hearing.
Sure.
So, it's, I guess...
The Breeze Hill project is kind of self-explanatory. I don't know that we're going to go through that for all of these design reviews, but on the real controversial ones, they'll definitely be back in front of you.
I think we're adjourned. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's right at that ending stage for the tickle, you know? Give these to Joni.
We're back on the 19th, two meetings.